Hey Zach.
Jess, you can go and take that, take it off. I have, I have it ready, so don't have to juggle too much that way.
Jess, you're not going to get called up to go defend the Capitol, are you?
I don't think so. I hope not.
Me too.
They usually don't use old, old engineer officers who usually plan facilities to do that kind of work.
Jess, you need to raise your chair up a little bit. We can, we can see you from the chin up, basically.
Okay Jess, it looks like it's 4:30, so why don't we go ahead and get started with the study session?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Jess McNeely with Community Development Staff, and we'd like to welcome all the commissioners to your study session for today, January 6th. And just a reminder, your study session here, we'll be going through your agenda that you have received and that we've posted. I believe we sent you out and updated one email, and we do have that updated one posted as well, in which we will go over the cases that are currently scheduled for your public hearing on January 27th. I'll note that you do have a quorum here. We have a quorum of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The only appointed Planning and Zoning Commissioner that is not with us is Commissioner Mary Williams, and it's a great time to make a plug for, we are barely making quorum, so commissioners, those of you who, who have good communication with supervisors, just know that Supervisor Lena Fowler has two open seats, and Supervisor Liz Archuleta has one open seat as of, as of Ray moving away and leaving the commission. So always encourage you to put in a plug for getting, getting the super, makes for great community representation, and avoids the risk of not having a quorum for one of your public hearings in which you, in which you make decisions for the public. So we'll jump into your study session. I would like to point out to the commission and to members of the public that this is a hearing, and it follows, follows open meeting law in that it's open to the public. These first items that we will be discussing from 4:30 now until 5:30 are all just study session, so they are not for public comment. The public hearing will start at 5:30, and Chair Antiveros will open that hearing and manage that hearing. So until 5:30, there's no public comment. However, commissioners, be aware that as we discuss study session items for your public hearing later this month, on January 27th, we do have a couple of members of the public joining us today, and we'll try to help you in this process of letting you know if you have questions on any of the study session items from any of the applicants, we can certainly assist in getting the, getting the applicants to speak, and possibly answer any questions if you have any. So commissioners, we'll, we'll go through the items on public hearing agenda for January 27th. We do ask that, that as this is study session and not the public hearing on the items, that we not discuss the merits of the case, that we not discuss making findings, whether or not you can make findings, but we would like to know if you have any questions or anything that you'd like staff to, to look at, to, to help guide us in prepping, prepping our presentations. So with that, Madam Chair, the first item on your study session agenda is CUP 2028. It is a conditional use modification to CUP 1950 that would allow the sale of water to private individuals at a standpipe facility. It's currently under a conditional use permit as a utility facility with specific conditions. This would be the Cerna's property in G 10 acre zoning located in Parks. It's located at 7887 East Old Route 66. And some of you are familiar with that property when it was before you previously for a conditional use permit. I'm going to share my screen right now and just kind of orient you to, to the property. Okay, everyone seeing my, my parcel viewer map with the aerial photograph?
Yeah, Mr. McNeely, we can see it.
All right. Well, the, the conditional use permit application is on this property that I'm indicating with my cursor right now. You can see that it is on the north side of East Old Route 66. You see its proximity to I-40, just a little bit further south, and you see that, you see where the interchange is to the west of it here. With the satellite imagery here, you do see a little loop drive that goes on to the property, and you see some structures in the middle of it that I'm pointing to here. There are some water tanks, so there is an existing standpipe well, infrastructure on the property, and tanks. Those of you who are familiar, familiar with this case would know that the existing conditional use permit for this utility facility, for this standpipe, limits the sale of this water to the applicant's hotel, which formerly existed on the south side of I-40, and that hotel has now changed ownership and is now, was redeveloped as the Kadampa Buddhist Temple that I'm sure we've all seen when we've driven west on I-40. So being that the applicants no longer have their hotel to supply water to, that the Kadampa Temple is, is under owner, other ownership, the applicants are essentially wishing to modify their conditional use permit conditions to allow the sale of water to individuals, as they stated. This site falls under the Parks Area Plan. The Parks Area Plan does have some policies about location of commercial uses, and, and that, that was discussed in previous go rounds of this conditional use permit and this use. So with that, staff will be preparing a staff report, looking at, at the change, that this site can no longer provide water to the hotel, and we will analyze it based on the four findings laid out in the zoning ordinance for you all, for the commissioners to be able to make in order to approve or deny a conditional use permit. And key, of course, will be the policies of the Parks Area Plan and how they would apply to, to this case. I would note that this site that we're looking at, this one parcel, only has just the, the utility infrastructure on it right now. Doesn't have a residence. The Cernas, the applicants, also own the property to the north. You see that I'm indicating with my cursor here. And one other property further to the west that I'm indicating right here. I believe part of the logic for the well and the standpipe, when it was first put in place, was for an ag use, an agricultural use that the Cernas have developed in this area for a, for vineyards, for growing grapes. With that, I'd be happy to field any questions from the Planning and Zoning Commissioners, and I'd be happy to, to hear any direction that any of you have for things I might look at in preparing this case. So Madam Chair, any questions?
Mr. McNeely, I've got just a couple. I do remember this case when it came before the Planning and Zoning Commission several years ago, and I remember that there were people that supported this, and I remember that there were a couple that did express opposition. And I'm wondering if the applicant has had the citizen participation hearing yet, and if we have a feel for the, what the community is saying right now.
Yeah, thanks for that, Madam Chair. The applicant has done their citizen participation plan, so they've held their meeting and they have a report from that meeting, and staff has received other input on this, on this case from surrounding property owners. The applicants indicate in their materials that they have some support from neighbors. Staff has received some correspondence from surrounding property owners indicating that some of the neighbors are opposed to the, to the change in conditional use conditions. So it would appear at this point, from the information we have now, that, that we, that we have neighbors both in support of and opposed to the change in use. Does that answer your question, Madam Chair?
Yes, it does. And just to further go down that road, I, I would be interested, when the time comes, of knowing where those that are in opposition, where their properties are located relative to the applicant's property. And so that, I, that, that I'm sure will be included in the staff report.
Sure.
And so that's, that is something that I will be looking for.
Okay.
I'd just like to add a little bit to that, in that Chair Antiveros remembers this quite well, as do I, having visited the property, but the issue she just brought up was an important one in the CUP hearing the last go around. So I'll just kind of double down on that one.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Okay. So Madam Chair, any other questions from any, any members of the commission? And I do believe that our applicant, Ms. Cerna, is with us in the study session.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I don't have any further questions, and I'll await the staff report on, on this case.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next case, item two on your study session agenda is CUP 2064, along with DRO 2012. This is a conditional use permit and design review overlay for an APS substation, which is a utility facility. It's on 2.3 acres within a 29 acre parcel in Belmont, and it's, so it's within the PC zone where CH Commercial Heavy 10,000 zoning standards apply. And Zach has already shared his screen. So Zach, go ahead.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, this is Zach Schwartz with Planning Staff, and we're looking at a request for this conditional use permit and design review overlay through the Belmont Design Review Guidelines for this APS substation utility facility. So I have up on the screen here a vicinity map. It's a very large parcel that the project will be located on. We're looking at a 2.3 acre portion of the parcel, right about here, I believe. And just to orient you, we have the Belmont exit here. Here's the pilot station. We're a little bit west, maybe a mile or two over in this area. I think I have another map here where you can see it a little more clearly. So here's the pilot station, the exit, and down Bramagan Parkway, kind of northwest here, just before that Forest Service Road that heads into the Coconino, heading northeast. That's where we're looking at this substation. So from the plans that we see, it's a few hundred feet by a few hundred feet of a walled-in area where they'll have their different equipment for the substation. Looks like on the property in the area, there's a number of different, here's a detention pond, and a number of different stormwater facilities associated with it as well. They show on an elevation here that they're requesting a 10-foot tall wall, so that's something that will require a waiver from the typical six-foot high standard of the zoning ordinance, and that's something where I'm assuming it's a liability issue and attractive nuisance type issue. The wall is proposed to be made out of split-faced block, which is something that the Designer View Guidelines specifically request, or it's something that is within those guidelines as something preferred. And you also see the entrance gates, so it appears that there will be two gates to enter, possibly a loop, to get in and off of Bramagan Park Road, that there will be these gates that are rolling metal gates, and it appears to be that Corten steel, that rusted metal steel. That is something I believe that the Designer View Guidelines also support. There isn't with this application a full landscaping plan submitted, but generally this page shows areas in green that will be landscaped, and that's something where the Designer View Overlay and just the Belmont Area Plan in general are looking to have the minimal requirements from the zoning ordinance for landscaping as met. So I think that the applicant is, is looking to fulfill that. And I have a few other notes that I just wanted to briefly go over. The area plan does note that in this area, it's something where pedestrian and other multimodal, like bike, sorts of travel are, is looking to support those types. So I think that I will discuss with the applicant whether, you know, what sorts of facilities that they would be proposing for possibly sidewalks or other improvements that might facilitate multimodal transportation. I'll look at consistency with our engineering design criteria manual for that. As far as outdoor lighting, I'm not suspecting that a lot of lighting will be needed or required, but if it is the, if it is requested, that's something where the Belmont Area Plan requests that everything be meeting the standards of lighting zone two, so kind of the middle ground of the restrictiveness of the different lighting zones. So that would be something that staff would recommend for this. And other than that, it seems fairly straightforward. But if there are any questions or comments from the commission, I'm happy to, to look into those while I'm writing my staff report.
This is Scott, and I, I got a call from Janet Dean from APS, so I had some ex parte communication with APS. And I just told her a little of the history, what's been going on recently, and basically an industrial, industrial area that's really in a lot of ways turning into a residential area as well. And they've got a lot of extra land here, so the, the trail and sidewalk concepts that Zach just mentioned are interesting. I told her if they promised to put in a hair salon and a coffee shop and some other, you know, sort of residential things that they, that they would be loved to death out there. I, I have no idea what they're going to do with that extra land, but one, one would assume it's going to be disposed of once they get their use out of what they need, so. We just follow along with that. I, I don't, we have really no way to control that, but if we can encourage in any way things like sidewalks and trails and make it less industrial looking, and maybe it could somehow encourage somebody to put some, some things in there that make it more of a neighborhood. I think the, the neighborhood in general was kind of disappointed in the RV park, or the RV storage facility. So just a comment and let you know that I did have our ex parte communication.
Thank you.
Commissioner Best, I can't say that, my understanding is they're actually going to cut off a piece of the property buy it from the current, current owner who has actually looked at several different development proposals for this area. So it appears that they will just be buying a piece from the current owner.
So you don't think, so you just think they're going to buy what they need?
Yes, I, that was my understanding, that they would buy this piece. I think they already have a land division permit in, from Carol Byrne, and Carol Byrne's currently the owner, and she's looked at several different, you know, she's talked to us about several different development proposals over the years.
And Bob, this is Jess. Some of those proposals have essentially been mixed-use, am I correct?
Yeah, there've been a variety of things. There, there was an apartment complex, there was manufactured homes, there was RV parks, lots of different things that I've talked to different people about in that area.
Okay. Well, Madam Chair, Commissioners, any other questions on this item, on the APS Substation Utility Facility CUP in Belmont?
I have none.
Okay. Well, Madam Chair, that brings us up to our third item, Zone Change 2017. That is a zone change from G to RC Resort Commercial with approval of a master development plan. It's on 64 acres at the Newman Park exit. Bob is managing this case, and he's already got the screen pulled up. I will tell you that the applicant's submittals went through our process, and we just got with the, with the holidays over the past couple of weeks, we just got a response from our environmental quality engineer, David Monahan, that he was not approving the applicant's preliminary wastewater design. As many of you remember, the zoning ordinance requires with a zone change, and particularly the planned zone districts, a preliminary drainage plan, preliminary stormwater drainage plan, and a preliminary wastewater plan. And our environmental engineer, David Monahan, was not, in concurrence, their submitted preliminary wastewater plan was sufficient. So we've had communication with the applicant, the applicant's going back to designing, to improving their preliminary wastewater plan. We anticipate that we will bring this back to you for study session again at the end of this month, on January 27th, but it will not be on the public hearing, January 27th, because we already had it on the study session, and the applicant asked that, that we go ahead and get some input from you on this case. Bob's going to go ahead and, and explain some of this case to you. It is a big development and a pretty complex development, so there's a good chance that you'll get to see this on study session twice. So Bob, go ahead.
Oh, thanks Jess, and thank you, Madam Chair. So this is the property I think some of you are familiar with. It was, went through a zone change process about a year ago, a little more than a year ago. It actually didn't, it didn't go very far. They pulled it off of the agenda. At some point, they were proposing an industrial site out here. Anyway, so this is the property. It's about, it's right south of Cuchina Village, and it's kind of halfway between Cuchina Village and Munn's Park. It's, it's off the Newman exit, Newman Park exit. The Newman Park exit's about three quarters of a mile up from this parcel. And as you can see, there is some flood plain on the property. I wanted to show you that first. So there is some flood plain on there, and they have provided quite extensive studies on this, at this preliminary stage, anyway. So let me go ahead and pull up the parcel, the site plan for you. Oh, here we go. Okay, so this is the site plan. Hope you can see that all right. This is oriented to the north, so north is to the right, south is to the left.
Hey Bob, we're still seeing, we're still seeing parcel viewer.
Okay, sorry about that. Thanks. I guess it wants me to share something new here. See if that works. How about now, is that?
Seeing the site plan. Go ahead.
Okay, good. So the, like as I was saying, north is to the right, south is to the left, and the, and you can see this is Interstate 17 as it goes by over here. This is a frontage road that would require to get access to this parcel. It has to go through National Forest to the north off of the Newman Park exit, and that would, they would upgrade this road to create a, you know, a basic access road for the, for the property. It actually does continue to go on through. The pink area would be RV park, RV park area, RV spaces. And as you can see, on the more east on the side, away from the highway, these would be cabins. They would do a minimal amount of trimming the forest to get cabins in on this side. They want to, this is an existing pond on the property. I believe they would develop it to some extent. And this is another pond. I'm not sure if that's there, if that's existing right now. I believe it probably is. If you've driven by it a few times, you know that there's quite a bit of water that sets up on here during the, during the spring runoff. So that's certainly something we need to look at. Landscaping is retaining the existing, but also you can see these trees throughout the cabin area, and so they had put in additional landscaping there. Over here, we're looking at some native turf that they would be installing and keeping. Sorry, my dog's barking in there. And that's, they, they are looking at quite a bit of open space areas. They're saying 56.3% of the total area. I think they're, they're actually claiming a lot of this is open space. And the definition of open space is a little vague in the ordinance, so it's, so I think they do have, they do have quite a bit, though, that they are saving. And I, in terms of, I'm going to pull those plans up, but in terms of lighting, they had, I believe I counted 16, basically, street lights that were 16 feet off the, 16 feet off the ground, you know, 16 feet high, dark skies lighting, of course, and then lighting for each of these cabins. I believe that would be required by our building code, all dark skies. Anyway, I wanted to show you one other thing here. If I can, no, I guess I don't have that right now. But they, they do have some, some nice designs for cabins. And I also wanted to say that the entire design team for this company, for this application, is present, I believe, at the meeting, or at least a few people are here. So if you have any questions for them, you can ask them those as well. With that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
My, my first look at it, I'm thinking fire. That's going to be a big one because it's basically out in the forest, even though there's a highway next to it. And the other one is this ongoing conversation we've been having about the relationship between these facilities and the National Forest. I know, basically, the applicant is responsible for what happens on their property. But there's also an interface with the National Forest. I don't see any direct communication, but now all anybody has to do is get out on that road and take the first dirt road, and off they go. So I definitely want to see some sort of a, an education program, leave no trace program, something that helps visitors understand the delicate nature of the forest, and what they can do to help preserve it. The last few of these things we've done, we've had, we've stipulated no helicopter rental tours and no, no motorized vehicle rentals, so that we don't exacerbate the razor issue. No motorized vehicle rentals so that we don't exacerbate the razor issue with these. ATVs tearing up the forest. Is there any? This road is not an easement on any private property anywhere. Is that correct? Between the between the intersection and this development.
It's, I believe it's some type of forest road. I know it's a, it's a. Forest that goes straight down the high, then the highway and it goes through this property and continues to go. South from here with the applicant. I'll be able to answer that if you'd like the applicant to answer that for you.
Sure.
Bruce or someone on your team want to answer that?
Good evening. My name's Bruce Lutz. I'm a senior planner and landscape architect. On the project, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. That is, and Steve Lewis is on board as well. He can correct me if I'm wrong, but it is a Forest Service road. We have had communications with the Forest Service and they are open to the idea of the improvements that we're. Suggesting for the road to the interchange.
Okay, I hope that conversation also. Expands to. The offsite impact of having, how many sites are here?
The, the. The totals are, the RV total is 151 sites and the cabin total is 147 cabin sites.
So that's 300 units, so you could easily have six, 700 people there on a busy weekend. All wanting to recreate in the forest adjacent to there, so. You know, what we found is that the Forest Service is undermanned now. And they've had a really hard time dealing with the increase in forest use because the COVID-19 people wanted to get out of town. And and so it, in order to make this work, it really requires a partnership, some education and. And the applicant trying to do their best to understand the dynamics of putting 700. People want to get up in the morning and go have an adventure in the forest in that particular area.
And and we we respect that and we'll we'll make our best effort to have an open communication of the Forest Service regarding those matters.
And and honestly, we've had situations, we've done three or four of these recently. You may have a hard time finding somebody at the Forest Service who will even talk to you. They're that understaffed. So it's really a challenge. And. So best of luck to you and. You know, other than that, it looks pretty well organized.
Thanks for the heads up on the on the Forest Service.
Bruce, you want to speak to the expected clientele, whether you expect clientele that would use off-road vehicles?
Well, I, I, I think maybe either Steve or Tom could address that better than I can, but. You know, our assumption is that this is, this is a place where people where people will come and stay. There won't be a lot of in and out traffic, particularly the cabins, maybe a longer term kind of stay. So we're anticipating that. There's, there's going to be a good deal of pride and ownership. As 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 a ownership response here and that. Their respect for their surroundings. Will be, will be drilled into them as in terms of rules and regulations. And we will certainly communicate with the Forest Service in terms of what. What our possibilities for use are that that do not. Overtax their their resource there. So, you know, all of that is is very important and we intend to to take those steps.
You know, another thing that I've been thinking of lately trying to. You know, in a weekend, trying to educate people from the flatland desert and how to treat. You know, an alpine forest, not quite alpine, but very different than where they're from most of them. And and that might be just some education on the ecology, you know, how. What the settlers found when they got here, how they changed it, how we got into the difficult. Fire regime we're in now. Where it's so dangerous in many parts of the forest because there are too many trees out there. And there are signs at Willow Bend Environmental Center here in town at the Arboretum. Different places around town that sort of in a, in a very. Concise and and beautiful way explain what's going on. You know, they got great art on them and they. They explain the ecology. So some sort of program like that might both enhance. Your development and also help people understand where they are and why they should. Behave in a way that's consistent with where they are. Some of them will have no clue.
We are in total agreement. I I happen to be located in Northwest Montana. We are. Ever cognizant of the the possibility of fire damage and we have had some hellacious fires up here and so I I'm totally on board with what what you just mentioned.
Great, thanks.
This is Commissioner Walters. I'm going to follow up on Commissioner Best's comments here about the fire. This is much like the Flathead Valley in that this area has been untreated. To the, the winds come primarily out of the southwest here and and there's a hillside where that that fire would just race up. So. What I'm looking for is a, is a fire break in between there. The Forest Service has not yet gone in and. Had done any thinning back in the forest area there all the way up to the next Forest Service road. So this is a very critical area and and very hazardous. I'm also concerned is is Commissioner Best mentioned about the the off-road access. There's. Your improved frontage road here takes you to another Forest Service road to the south. And then just to the north here, there's another one that goes up on that ridge and connects into there. And I'd sure hate to see this be. The the new major impacted area due to this trailer park and and all the. Off-road activities. So I'd like to to see how you guys are going to address that when you come back. Otherwise, the plan looks pretty good. The drainage here, we've had some discussions. I know this property really well. I've had some discussions with the owner on here about that drainage and and I'd be real interested to see how you're going to take care of this. I've seen water from one end to the other on on this property. So. That's, that's basically the comments that I have.
Thanks for your input.
Any other questions to the Commission?
Um, yes, Mr. Short, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I do have a question for Mr. Lutz. I, I think I could safely assume the answer to it, but I'm going to, I'm going to ask it. This is going to be a managed on park as in there's going to be. Someone there full time, all the time, correct?
Absolutely, and and probably a whole staff worth of of management, yes.
Okay, okay, and that would be on, yeah, really to kind of tone down those things, the concerns that Commissioner Best and Commissioner Walters. On have stated. There I'm, would it also be safe to assume that there would be some kind of, I don't know if you would call it security or enforcement? If you will, to make sure on, because if this is approved, it will come with a set of conditions. And some sort of management to make sure that those conditions are enforced.
Absolutely, and I, and I think we can provide a, an outline for for the management. That we'll employ on the property as we go forward.
Okay, okay. This is a beautiful piece of pro. Property oning up from 17. I I don't know anyone who is not familiar with it. And and so it's a real gym and like I think it was Commissioner Walter said, we don't want to see this. Be the beginning of anything that would become detrimental to that area and the surrounding properties. So. I will, I will leave it at that and thank you so much for your answers.
Thank you.
Any other questions in remission?
Is it, is it safe to assume there's not going to be any fire pits or anything like that? I don't see anything like that on the the plans here. I just want to. Know if there's anything like that in the plans.
I'm sorry, I missed the first part of that.
Um, I just wanted to know if there were like within the RV spaces or or anywhere, if there's any plans to have any kind of. Fire pits or anything.
No, not to my knowledge. I I think those will be, if if there are any of those, those would be. Accommodated in in the community center and and centralized, not spread all over the site.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we didn't add to fire hazard.
Absolutely.
Also, the issue of a fast evacuation. I I don't know quite how all those roads are linked out there, but trying to get, you know. Three, 400 vehicles off that property in half an hour. Things can happen really fast in a forest far as you know, so. Think about, think of various ways to get out of there.
Great point. Thank you.
Okay, this is Chair Antovereus again, and these are just my last thoughts. Mr. Lutz, we came off of the case a month or so ago where on the off-road vehicles razors. Were a huge issue. Are you guys, do you guys have any plan for that at this point?
You know, I I think we've thought about it and talked about it, but I I think it needs to be incorporated into our management, overall management plan. And and I, again, I think this is something we we should draft and have in your hands. As as part of our submittal.
Okay, okay, and I appreciate that. I'm really just kind of trying to head off some of the issues. That have been brought before the Commission previously, just a little bit ahead of time. So it it sounds like you are seeking input and so with that. That's really all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else from the Commission?
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks.
So, Madam Chair, this is Jess again, and that concludes our our cases that we anticipate coming. Before you for public hearing. If we move on your study session agenda. We're now to the, the list of cases which are eligible for administrative renewal. And you can see that we have two CUPs. Two conditional use permits, CUP 2065 and CUP 2066. That's an RV and boat storage in Greenhaven and the Frontieri Artist in Residence. Conditional use permit. Both of those are up for administrative renewal. Were there any questions of? Any questions from any of the Commissioners about the two administrative renewal cases that we have right now? Okay, if there's none, Madam Chair, that gets us up to our department update. So I would just refer you to your study session agendas for the Community Development Department update. Item one, wanted to let you know that that Pam McClellan, who has been with us for a number of years. In an, in an administrative role has happily retired. And so we're in the process of recruiting one of our administrative positions. This administrative position. And primarily supports our environmental quality, our wastewater division. Likewise, Rachel Davis, who was working as a planner within the department for several years, has been promoted to business manager. And Rachel is, has already assumed that role. She took that when Irene retired. And with, with Rachel acting as or now being promoted to the position of business manager for the department. We are recruiting for a planner. And I think all the Commissioners have a lot of experience. So if any Commissioners want to come out of retirement and and work on our staff here as a planner. We're recruiting.
Don't even think about it.
It's, it's a. Great, great deal of satisfaction in this work. So hopefully by next, by your next hearing. On January 27th, we'll, we'll have some updates on those staff positions. On item two, we wanted to let you know that the county selected Matrix of Phoenix as the J-List Implementation Project Consultant. And I believe the. The board just approved their contract yesterday. At the Board of Supervisor hearing. So we will be moving forward with the J-List Implementation Project. Not the least of which would be a dark sky and inventory of non-conforming lighting within the city and the county. And moving forward on getting the city and the county lighting ordinance updates. Those are, those are part of that project among other things. And I believe we have Jay Crystalman with us. So Jay, if if there's anything else you wanted to let the Commissioners. Know about the J-List Implementation Project. Or did we lose Jay? Looks like we lost him. Okay. Any questions from any Commissioners on the joint land use study? All right, hearing none. Wanted to also let you know that the Donnie Park Timberline Fernwood Area Plan Update is continuing with their monthly meetings. Their committee has been split into subcommittees to draft the area plan goals and policies. And we have a a couple of Commissioners. Commissioner Ruggles and Commissioner Clifford, who are serving on that committee as well. Item four, wanted to let you know that staff and advisory groups continue working on the utility scale renewable energy ordinance. And Melissa is managing that project. Melissa is not with us today. She had a, she had an ice skating accident. So had to, had to take care of some of that today, but but shouldn't slow her down. She will continue with the renewable energy ordinance update. Did anybody have any questions on the update to the to the renewable energy ordinance? We've got a couple of minutes here. So Madam Chair, I was just going to show you all a schedule on a PowerPoint. Just for for you all's knowledge. So you'd know where we're at with renewable energy ordinance. So is everybody seeing the PowerPoint that I have up on the screen?
Yeah, we can see it.
Okay, just wanted to let you know that both the technical advisory group and the. Community advisory groups are continuing to review and continuing to have meetings with them. As a matter of fact, we just had one yesterday. That went from four till about 5:30 PM yesterday. We do have a Board of Supervisors work session scheduled for March 6th. Because we have the Board of Supervisor work session scheduled for, excuse me, for April 6th. We would like to do a study session with you all on March 31st at your P and Z Commission Study Session. So we're hoping by March 31st to get a a draft ordinance out to you. On on what has been drafted so far between staff and the advisory groups and discuss that in a study session with you on March 31st. And that will prepare us to then go to the board on April 6th. Following that, we will go into a public open house process. As we all know. Community planning is is obviously widely using web platforms like we're on right now to accomplish our open house and public input processes. Will then complete editing our draft based on input and we anticipate public hearings, probably know. The earliest we would anticipate public hearings might be some point this summer, if we can get through through the rest of these steps. And with that, any questions from any members of the Commission about? And with that, any questions from any members of the commission about the renewable energy ordinance process and schedule? And of course, if anyone would like to see any of it, um, we can certainly get you links to, to the draft, uh, that we have available at this point in time that we're working on with the advisory groups. Okay. If there's no questions about the renewable energy ordinance, I will stop sharing my screen. And, uh, the next item we wanted to, uh, always keep you updated on is the county's current posture related to COVID-19. As you all know, uh, same as last month, we're still in, uh, back to phase one of county operations. So public lobbies are close to the public. Our lobby is close to the public. However, we are able to schedule meetings. We can let people in our doors, um, when people schedule meetings with us. We hold them in a big conference room. Um, we, we wear masks and we just follow the, uh, the county's protocols that way. And of course, now that we're into a new year and knowing that, um, there is a vaccine on the horizon, we're all looking forward to someday, um, being able to move back to, um, to in-person meetings. In the meantime, I would certainly commend, uh, the commission and, and the community at large on continuing to take care of community business and, and move forward with development and land use decisions, um, regardless of the, uh, of the restrictions on us being able to meet together. So, uh, Madam Chair, that concludes our department update. Were there any questions from any of the commissioners about internal department things? Okay. With that, um, if you look at your agenda, we wanted to give you a Board of Supervisors update, um, just to let you know, on December 8th, uh, the board voted to continue the Happy Jack Lodge expansion. That was zone change, ZC 2012 to March 9th. So, uh, we anticipate, uh, Happy Jack Lodge expansion going on March 9th. That should be the same date that, um, the board will hear the Marble Canyon Zone Change that you all recommended approval of. Also, on December 8th, the Board of Supervisors continued the Two Guns Zone Change. That was Zone Change 2007, uh, to the RC Resort Commercial District. They did not set a date specific for that continuation. The applicant is utilizing a cultural resource consultant on outreach, specifically outreach to some of the tribal communities in the area. When the applicant has completed outreach, uh, and has input from that outreach, then, um, we'll let the applicant, um, let us know that, and we will get them scheduled back for the Board of Supervisors. So any questions from the commission on Board of Supervisor hearings?
Yes, Jess, um, what were the issues with Happy Jack that caused it to be continued?
Actually, uh, Madam Chair and Commissioner Best, um, that was, that was actually, uh, requested by the applicant prior to the hearing. So they, the board didn't even hold a hearing. It had been posted and noticed that they would hold a hearing, um, but in working with the applicant, the applicant wanted to work out their traffic issues, um, prior to going to, uh, to the board. So I believe, uh, the applicant wanted to have, um, some, uh, better numbers on their TIA and just better information, um, for, for their presentation to the, uh, to the board. So they voluntarily, uh, continued to March 9th. Does that answer your questions, Commissioner Best?
It does. Thank you.
Sure. So, um, Madam Chair, that brings us up to the Commission and Staff Roundtable. Just as we discussed at your last hearing, uh, we, um, staff and, and members of the commission are certainly, uh, have had some input in proposing a P&amp;Z Commission Retreat. Uh, we were talking about February. I was able to, uh, to do some prep work with Chair Antiveros and see that the dates I was proposing in the third week of, of February, um, are probably not going to work for, for, uh, for, uh, Chair Antiveros, and she would obviously like to be here. So, um, with that, I would propose that we look at either the second week in February or the first week in March. We've got about eight minutes till your, uh, till your public hearing starts. So if there's any input any of the commissioners would like to give me now on, um, on whether the second week of February or the first week in March is preferable, I'd be happy to hear it and I'll jot down a note. And I can certainly send out, um, based on what I hear verbally from you right now, I can send out a doodle poll to everyone. Most of us have used doodle polls before, and, and with that doodle poll, we could certainly nail down a date prior to your next hearing. So do any of the commissioners have any comments as to what works better for them, um, for a retreat? We anticipate the retreat would be a half day, uh, probably start at, um, possibly 8:30 in the morning and go to, uh, go to lunchtime. And we could, we could host a couple of people into one of our conference rooms and basically have everybody else in the same format we're on right now, um, attending, uh, via Zoom. So any comments?
Just, just one comment. I kind of like the idea of the first week in March, but, uh, you know, whatever works for everybody else, I can accommodate just fine. And, uh, if you could manage to, uh, well, schedule the weather so we don't have a storm. Uh, I'm not looking for another opportunity for a concussion, uh, if I actually show up in person.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. I can, I can, I think I can guarantee that we will not hold this one, um, at Fort Tuthill, um, at the, uh, at the historic fort there. So I think we can avoid, uh, uh, some ice slips that were experienced at the last retreat. And more than likely, I, I would anticipate, um, uh, that, uh, the majority of the commissioners will, will participate via Zoom. But thank you for, um, recommending the first week in March. I've noted that. Any other commissioners like to, uh, give any verbal indication as to which, which would be their preferred week?
Mr. McNeely, this is Chair Antiveros. That works fine with me. And like, like Commissioner Ruggles said, on, you know, we're, we're, we're workable.
Okay. Well.
I would think that I would probably, uh, be a little more secure in March. But I could probably make either time.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Looks like with, um, not hearing from any of the other commissioners, look like, looks like we're leaning that way. I will send out a doodle poll to all of you in your email, um, in which will list, uh, actual days, and we'll see which day actually works for everyone's schedule. So, Madam Chair, that would conclude the study session agenda for today. Looks like we've got five minutes, um, until 5:30 when your public hearing starts. Any other, any other questions or discussions on the roundtable?
I don't, I do not have any. And if nobody else, if the other commissioners do not, why don't we just take a quick five-minute break and start, start the, uh, the hearing at 5:30?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, I wanted to ask you one thing. What kind, what are you hearing about the issue of the dirt in, uh, in Fort Valley? Are you guys actively working on that?
So, uh, Madam Chair, um, Commissioner Best, uh, there's a, there is a grading permit, um, for, uh, for that property. It's a residential property and, um, uh, dirt has been, has been brought onto the site. If you, um, if you move, uh, 50 cubic yards of dirt or more, and I think they've exceeded that, uh, requires a grading permit. And so there is an, there is an active grading permit on the site. I, I know our, our staff gets a lot of calls about that, and, um, so the grading permit is being managed by our engineering division. Looks like we've got, uh, Jay Christelman, the director, on the meeting as well. Jay, feel free if you had any input, um, that you wanted to give, but, uh, it's certainly, it's, at this point, it's, it's not a P&amp;Z. It's not something that's, that's technically regulated by the zoning ordinance.
So. Yes. Thank you, Jess. Good evening, Commissioners. So we actually stopped work to that project and required and engineered, uh, site plan just because they exceeded the scope of their original permit. So, um, they haven't been hauling, uh, material onto the site for the last week and a half or so, and we're waiting for that engineer drawing to come in.
Okay. I, I, I've seen a lot of emails go by. Those of you who haven't seen it, it's, uh, pretty shocking, and it looks like we've got a hole in our ordinances that you can drive a, uh, 18-wheeler full of dirt through. So I, I think we'll be working on that in the future. One issue related to that is, uh, state laws regarding noxious weeds, which are, I believe, I, I, I don't know what they are, but it'd be interesting if somebody looked into that. There hasn't been any effort so far to landscape out there. So it's, of, of course, growing up in noxious weeds at a scale that's kind of unbelievable. And that might be, this, this might be a time when we actually start using whatever law may be applicable. I, I think there is, well, I should be quiet. I, I, I think it'd be interesting if somebody checked into that. Because there are acres and acres of, uh, land out there that people are very upset about in the, in the community. And I, and I know that some of the supervisors are involved as well. And that, uh, that noxious weed law at the state level might have some teeth in it that would help the situation.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Best. Looks like we're on a break, and, um, we, uh, will kick back up here in two minutes at 5:30 for your public hearing.
Okay, Commissioner McNeely, my clock shows 5:30, so I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. And I will start with reading the meeting rules and procedures. Mr. McNeely, can you hear me okay?
Madam Chair, I hear you fine. Go ahead.
All right, here we go. Welcome to the January 6th, 2021, uh, meeting of the Coquenino County Planning and Zoning Commission. Cases will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. Following the staff presentation, the applicant and/or the applicant's representative may address the commission. As an applicant, if you agree with the staff report and have no additional information, please feel free to keep your comments brief. Any relevant comments are welcome. Following the applicant's presentation, I will make a call to the public. If you wish to address this case, please state your name and address. We ask that your comments be limited to three minutes or less. Comments must be relevant to the case. Please address all comments to the commission. No matter how strongly you may feel about the case, all comments must be polite and courteous. After all interests of public have spoken, the public comment portion will be closed. Discussion will then take place amongst commissioners. No additional public comments may be made unless requested by a commissioner. Decisions of this commission regarding any zone change or preliminary subdivision plat approval are referred to the Board of Supervisors as a recommendation. All other case decisions are binding unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors. If you disagree with the commission's decision, you have 15 days to appeal. Please contact staff at the Community Development Office for appeal procedures. Due to the virtual nature of this meeting, I will be doing a roll call vote of the commissioners to assure accuracy for the record. Please mute your speakers and turn off your camera. Also, do not use the comment function for discussions. It is for communications with staff if you have a problem. And thank you for joining us this evening and actively participating in our county plan. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would like to lead us, Mr. McNeely.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely. A second item on the agenda is the approval of the December 2nd, 2020 minutes. So I'm going to need a motion and a second if there are no changes requested.
I make a motion for approval of the minutes for the December 2nd hearing?
I'll second that.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Walters and a second by Commissioner Clifford for approval of the December 2nd, 2020 minutes. All those in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
And this is Chair Antiveros, and I abstain. The first item for our public hearings tonight is case number ZC 19-009.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Zach Schwartz with Planning and Zoning Staff, and this is case ZC 19009. The applicants and property owners for the case are Jack Howley, Craig Steele, Darius Mosey, and the Kristen Family Trusts. They're all the Flagstaff. The existing zoning for the property is RR4. That's a single-family residential zone, rural residential with a four-acre minimum. And the proposed zoning is the same except for a two-acre minimum. There are four properties for the subject request, and they are 20 acres, two eight-acre parcels, and a four-acre parcel. So that's 36 acres in total. I have up on the screen for you a vicinity map, so you can see with my cursor and where the red circle is. This is the subject property. Everything that's sort of in this grayish color is within the City of Flagstaff's jurisdiction, and the entirety of this area up here is known as Locket Ranches. So you can see that this lighter yellow color, that's all RR4, and surrounding the property to the north and east is this RR2 zone here, and a little bit darker yellow, uh, to the west is AR, and it's the, um, Museum of Northern Arizona property. Here I have an aerial photo map of the subject properties. So you can see one, two, three parcels here and one parcel here. There are three residences that currently occupy some of these existing properties. And you can also see that there's fairly dense, mature, um, ponderosa pine vegetation throughout, especially on the southern side of this Moonrise Valley. So as you come into Locket Ranches, the main road is Quintana Drive, and you take a left here, and this is Moonrise Valley, which is an access easement and utility easement, uh, to the subject properties here. Right on this area that I'm showing with my mouse, there is a large escarpment that brings you down to the west adjacent to that M&amp;A property. I took some pictures for the staff report, and the first on top is the entrance to this development. So it's from Quintana Drive, looking down Moonrise Valley. You can see a yellow marker here that's showing that the utilities are along this. And you can see that for about half of Moonrise Valley Road, it's paved. The bottom, uh, photo I have here is on Moonrise Valley, about halfway down, looking sort of northwest. And this is the Mosey property right here, right where they have the recycling and garbage cans, is where the road goes from pavement to kind of a compacted aggregate base for the roadway. And as far as some background for this development, all of Locket Ranches was originally developed in what's called an unsubdivided land, so not a subdivision. But when you have 36 acres plus for all of your different lots, it's something that's approved by the state and doesn't require going through the planning and zoning subdivision process or to the Board of Supervisors, and splits occurred from there. So most of the parcels in the area in Locket Ranches have split. have split down to their zoning minimums at this point. But something that's different about this unsubdivided lands that we typically see in splits in very rural areas or in other cases where we have the unsubdivided lands is that we have mostly paved roads throughout, utilities throughout, and an HOA. So that's something that's a little bit developed in a little bit higher of a way than what we typically see with this style of development, the 36-acre ranchettes unsubdivided lands. For some other histories, so in 1998, all of Locket Ranches was originally in the AR zone, that's agricultural residential with a one-acre minimum parcel size. And the original owners of the Locket Ranches area downzoned themselves to the RR4 and RR2 zones that you largely are still intact the way that they were changed at that time. And that was done by the owners to keep a low-density character. And the RR zone is actually a zone that doesn't allow manufactured homes. The AR zone does, so that was another point of sort of doing this downzoning. For the proposed development, the applicant didn't come up with a development plan that the commission typically sees. When we go for a zone change, the applicant is looking to, or the applicants are looking to just rezone from RR4 to the RR2 to allow future owners to split down to the two-acre minimums. And I will say that what you see on the screen right here, and this was in your packet, is something that one of the applicants has proposed. You can see that the parcels proposed are all above the four-acre minimum that currently exists, so this would be approvable today. But it kind of shows, you can see here where Moonrise Valley comes up, and that's utility and roadway easement that we typically see with subdivisions. And because it has that sort of easement there, it's likely that all the parcels here would sort of split along so that they could have the frontage on Moonrise Valley. And in lieu of having that full development plan, the applicant has also agreed to develop a slope and wildlife easement along that escarpment piece, which I'll show on the next slide, how that is something that they're planning on. And the applicants have also agreed for, Moonrise Valley doesn't have its own road maintenance agreement or that sort of thing. So the applicant is agreeable, and staff has conditions should the commission wish to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors, that they create that kind of agreement and record that so that it will happen in perpetuity, the road maintenance of Moonrise Valley. There is a fire district for all of the Locket Ranches area that currently exists, so that's something that we typically see in a subdivision, where you wouldn't usually see that in a lot split situation. And roadways and utility easements are existing, so all of those aspects make future development more consistent with a typical subdivision in lieu of having a full development plan. As far as fire safety, each lot that splits out in Locket Ranches actually, by the way, is required to have a firewise plan, but implementation is not currently enforced. Staff did make a recommendation based on a comment from one of the board members of the Locket Ranches Fire District that they, that the applicants consult with the district about thinning on the property. It's something that one of the fire risk managers with the county noted might be helpful, and one of the board members noted might be helpful as thinning in general. But the district has since noted that rather than making it a requirement that the, that the district is looking to get grants and work with property owners in Locket Ranches to implement the firewise plans, so they're looking to acquire, and it says require there, I apologize that, but acquire grants to help people implement the firewise plans. So the district is looking for the commission to strike the recommended condition number three. It's also notable that regardless of any future splits, those would be required to be in the district, the fire district, because of the HOA in any case. And there are, there is at least one member of the fire district in the audience if there are questions on this. So I'm not the expert on that portion of it, but as we get to the discussion with the commission, it might be wise if any of the commissioners are concerned about this, that they ask the members of the fire district about how they would like to see this work. Regarding the wildlife corridors and slope easement, so here I am showing, this is where the escarpment piece is. And part of the conditions that are recommended, the applicant would create sort of an easement out of this area with the arrows and the orange. And I did have, I'm trying to find it now, and I apologize. There actually is a study. And it looks like I don't have it here, but if we get to it in the discussion, I'd be happy to show that adjacent, we have the Museum of Northern Arizona parcels where lately there has been some discussion and trying to get at conservation easements for all of that M&amp;A property, because it does have some wildlife assets. And I think one, at least one of the property owners that are the applicants actually has contributed a bit toward trying to set aside the properties adjacent to the M&amp;A for conservation easements. And there's a wildlife corridor that directly abuts this parcel to the west that comes down here. And so the applicant's willingness to create a wildlife corridor and slope easement here would be a good holistic way of helping with the conservation easement and making sure that the wildlife corridor is there. And again, I am happy to try to find where I have this PDF of that study that shows a map of where this corridor is. But it is something that the applicants have been willing to work with staff and try to make this corridor possible. As far as public outreach, the applicant, so this is a 2019 case, and it was held for a number of months in order to find, in order to do some further looking at the plans and making sure that the commission would be comfortable with some of the plans. So during 2019, February 21 was a Homeowners Association meeting for Locket Ranches. And this is when one of the applicants brought the plans for the rezone to the HOA, and there were no objections from the HOA. And there, like I did mention, there was somebody from the fire district who mentioned that it might be desirable in the future to have some thinning on this property. Those were the only comments that were received by staff. As far as long-range plans, so there are three different plans that are applicable for this area. One is the Flagstaff Regional Plan, so I have a map up here, and you can probably see it a lot better in your actual packets, but the Flagstaff Regional Plan has a map of future densities that are desirable. And so this area here is where the subject properties are, and that's noted as rural existing, which calls out a density minimum of one unit per acre, so this request is consistent with the density that's called out in the regional plan. The comprehensive plan, there are a number of different goals and policies that I've noted in the staff report, and I'm happy to go over them. But generally, it supports projects that are considering firewise plans and wildlife corridors, that sort of thing. And the Fort Valley Area Plan supports rezones for more density only if they have a clear benefit to the planning area. And staff is, staff finds that the proposed wildlife corridor is a benefit to the planning area. So staff is seeing that this request is consistent with the applicable long-range plans for this area. As the commission knows, there are three findings of fact that need to be made for approval or recommendation of approval to the Board of Supervisors for a zone change. The first is that the change is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance. The second is that the change will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, comfort, convenience, and welfare. And the third is that the change will not adversely affect the established character of the surrounding neighborhood, nor be detrimental to adjacent properties. So again, I've analyzed that in the staff report, but I'm happy to discuss it if any of the commissioners have any questions on that. But with that, staff is recommending that if the commission can make the findings of fact that the commission forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors of approval of case ZC 19009 with the proposed conditions except for striking condition number three. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions from the commission.
Zach, two issues. One is there was some discussion about another egress to the north. Was that ever, any progress there?
Right. Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioner Best. So there was some discussion on that. And I think at the end result was that staff looked at what a similar development might be required to do. And it's typically only for subdivisions of 30 lots or more, or sort of a larger type of development. Is there actually a requirement to do that? I will say, and I'm sure that the applicant can speak more to this, that there are, there's at least one way up toward the north off Quintana, where there is a Forest Service easement for a pipeline, I believe, where it would be possible in an emergency situation to, not an officially sanctioned type of emergency exit, but it would be possible through those means. So that's where staff's analysis led on that.
Thank you. And the other issue is making sure that the easement on the escarpment there is held in perpetuity. I know that the county is holding an easement for the land below owned by the museum, which was a nice step forward because it can be tricky when you want to give an easement, who's actually going to hold it? If this is just held by the HOA or or just recorded on the deeds, does that make it in perpetuity, or does it need more than that?
Right, Commissioner Best. So I think there are two ideas that we're kind of looking at that are somewhat similar. So with the M&amp;A property, that's something where they're actually seeking to do a conservation easement, which does need to be held by some sort of land trust or some other organization, like perhaps Coconino County Parks and Rec would do something where, that's something where there's a large tax benefit, I believe, that's given to the property owner who does that sort of easement. And it's something where annually somebody goes out there, whoever holds the conservation easement and goes and verifies that nothing has been built on it. And that's something that is important, I think, for a large a large property with a lot of different resources that are very important for wildlife and the natural environment. In this case, what staff has recommended is that the applicant would record on the deed a legal description of an easement, and it would be something where just a no-build area. I don't think there is as much of assets as the M&amp;A property that's neighboring. And staff's take is that just having a no-build easement there would be sufficient for this small of a property, it's probably about two acres, maybe three for monitoring that we're not, you know, developing in that area, which will meet the desired intent for this sort of development.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Schwartz, I'm not seeing any further questions from the commissioners. So I'm going to ask if the applicant is here with us, and if so, would they like to address the commission on this case this evening?
Yes, this is Craig Steele. Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Steele, we can. And could you please state your address for the record?
101 East Moonrise Valley.
Okay, thank you. And before we go any further, I would just like to ask if you have received the staff report, if you have read it, and if you do agree with the conditions that are in there, and I do realize that there is discussion on striking number three. But to this point, have you read it and do you agree with it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, go ahead and address the commission, please.
Thank you. As far as the wildlife easement, non-development easement, I'm, I and my wife have, I was hoping that maybe Zach can still find the the map and with the the subdivision of that 90-acre Coconino Meadows property, which is owned by the M&amp;A. 18 acres of that, which is the land, as Zach has said, immediately abutting the the west side of the escarpment. And Dr. Howley's and my, my wife's property. That my wife and I are contributing $600,000 to over five-year payment plan. That's parcel C on that map. So the, the whole T-shaped thing is M&amp;A land, 89-plus acres, just under 90. And each of the five drawings is 18 acres. So on the the east border of parcel C on that is the Dr. Howley and my wife and I's property on that that border, north-south border there. And the escarpment is right in the area that's, which you can vaguely see the curve from the scrub oak along there. And that's about 15 to 18-foot drop-off, you know, the Celtic drop-off there. So it's a very well-defined feature. It does have some drainage and wildlife access paths that are used to come up to to the top of the escarpment. And the, that's a deer and elk migration path, specifically elk, which is a spectacularly isolated meadow down below that they, they come up to range around the area when they're they're about. And then they can retire there for, you know, for peace and quiet and to get away from the people and intrusion. And so we would like to maintain the character that with the and having non-development easement of whatever sort on the land beneath the escarpment to support that, because that's the natural range of that wildlife wildlife environment. And there is a path that you can see along the flatter part, the old farmland, that's a recreational path that's used quite a bit by cyclists and runners. But there is tree development between the, the path. It's kind of in the middle of, right where the bee is, it goes up to the north. And on the north side of that whole area is National Forest Land. Just on the other side of that, of the pipeline. And you can see the clearance path on the pipeline running east and west. Then Mount Eldon Lookout Road snakes along above that. As far as how we've got that up there, it's also worth noting that, that there is multiple rotable paths, drivable paths to to Mount Eldon Lookout Road from the north end of Quintana, which is off to the right, not showing up here. But right in that area, the upper right corner, there is private property there, and it would require trespassing on private property to, to open a gate to continue through on a paved road. So there's a paved exit path all the way from the north end of Quintana, which ends in a cul-de-sac. Multiple foot trails and bicycle trails heading out to the north from there, into the dry, dry-like hills. But it's quite possible to drive dry-like hills. But it's quite possible to drive over there without ever getting any dirt on your tires if you if you open a gate on private property. This isn't something that we can advertise as a as a publicly accessible path or road. It is, however, something that we can anticipate if it were useful with fire or county Sheriff's Department would, would use that if it were necessary. It's not a technical problem. It's a trespassing problem. So as far as the the, that conservation easement that, as I believe was mentioned by one of the commission members, is the land that eighty-nine to ninety acres remains the property of the MNA. The conservation easement has been accepted and will be beaded over to the Coconino County Board of Supervisors. That was accepted a year and a half ago by the, the board. So that is as close to perpetuity as I think we can get for that land. Now, as far as the two, two odd acres of land that we're talking about for Dr. Howley and my property, we were quite amenable to putting whatever makes sense on that in terms of a restriction. We can't promise to have something like that accepted by the county. That would require an action of the Board, County Board of Supervisors to do that. So that's kind of, you know, we're flexible on that, but certainly putting it in as a you know, as a note in the property deed is, is acceptable to us. As a practical matter, my house is on the, the, the upper half of that Dr. Howley's house down a little farther, that, that big lot there in the middle. And Dr. Howley's house is down below, right on the edge of the escarpment. He's got a great view. And we'd have to be idiots to, and our successors would have to be idiots to demolish that to get to have something that has no road access by the non-development, by, by the MNA development thing that I'm funding on parcel C. So it, in practice, it is not buildable. And there would have to be an approval of a, of a parcel split at some future point and building approval by the county, which would I find unimaginable. So, you know, as a practical matter, it's not buildable. You know, unless we lived in Los Angeles, you know, in the Hollywood Hills, nobody would even think about that. As far as the but we're amenable to whatever restriction makes sense on that. It's something practical. We, we don't want to develop. The Lockit Ranch Aspire District is a taxing entity. It's chartered by the county. Everyone, every property owner pays a supplemental line item property tax. I think mine was about thirteen hundred bucks last year. So it's, it's a real a real thing that, that has a substantial budget and has for the last several years contracted with the Flagstaff City Fire Department for multi-year contract. That's been the practice for the last last decade, I guess, maybe a little longer since the fire district was established. So the fire district has taxing authority. It has a substantial budget and it provides protection. On our specific piece of land on Moonrise Valley, the Flagstaff Fire Department has made an inspection of the load-bearing accessibility and safety of using Lockit, sorry, using Moonrise Valley for their fire equipment. And they said there were no access issues. I, on my eight acres, which is above and about half metal and you know, fairly thin on much of the areas, they, they inspected that property and said there were no thinning, no thinning required and no fire, no further inspections necessary around the developed areas. So it, we're, we have a lot of fairly open space there and it, it is not you know, there are lots of natural fire breaks, the meadows to the west and the meadows immediately you know, consisting of the, the east end of the properties that we're discussing. And one last point is that, oh, we are requesting a zoning change to two-acre minimum, which I will note is the minimum allowable by the Lockit Ranches Homeowners Association as well. Something that for which there's, they allow no slack. It's a strict two-acre limit. The main desire for, in my case, I would like the ability to split off a single two-acre parcel on lot on the east end of that eight acres, much of in that area mainly. So my heirs can pay an estate tax if necessary. I don't have any short-term development plan. But I would like to to have a salable property that would not require everything else to be sold as well. The, and again, I know that everything near and below, everything to the on the west half of the property is not practically buildable because the house is located right in the middle of that. And then there's the escarpment. So much of, and that's much of the same issue with Dr. Howley, who would like to put his affairs in order. It sounds pretty grim, but those are the times we live in too. And neither of us are spring chickens. The, to, to make it possible for heirs to sell off property is necessary. It's possible, I I think in my lifetime, I envision and once, I don't know what, how long Dr. Howley is planning on living. But I would expect there would be no more than perhaps five new residential lots created along this, in this whole thirty-six acre parcel. But it's since we're just talking about getting the ability to split off some pieces from the existing plans, we did not think it was appropriate to develop a purely speculative idea on you know, a development style plotting of the thing, because we, we have surveyed some possible lots. We, we've surveyed for five or six two-acre splits, but that is not necessarily intended to be done at any time soon, and that would not necessarily be be developed anytime soon. And it would not be developed by us. And I, I believe that, Jack, is there anything you would like to say?
Thank you. Good job.
No, I, I think that covers it. I thank you very much for your time. And I appreciate your time and any input you could give us about the particularly about the non-development, what, what the most practical and durable way of having non-development restriction put on the property underneath the escarpment for, for Jack and my two properties. Thanks very much.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Steele. Do the commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Okay, I am not seeing any commissioners unmuting to talk, to ask the applicant anything. So at this point, I will reach out and ask if there is anyone in the public who wishes to speak to the commission on this case tonight. Okay, and I am not seeing anybody from the commission. Mr. McNeely, do you see that I'm missing anything?
Madam Chair, I am looking at our list of participants. I do not see that anyone has a hand raised or, or is unmuted. So, no.
Okay, thank you. Then with that, I will go ahead and close it and open, close it to the public and open it up for commission discussion at this time. And Commissioner Clifford, you get to go first tonight.
Um, I have, I can make the findings on this to approve. I have, I have no problems with this. Seems like everybody's working to get that escarpment in order.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Walters?
I think most of my concerns were, were answered. Obviously, when you start looking down the road at who's gonna, gonna develop this property later on or, or, or cut it up into more two-acre parcels is always a concern. You know, it's the, the easements that we've had troubles with on these wildcat subdivisions. So that's, that's the only comments that I have.
Okay, and you can make the findings?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Burton?
Yeah, I think any concerns that I've had have been, have been stated. They, it sounds like they've worked really hard to try and accommodate everything that we've asked for and a little bit more. So I can make the findings.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Best?
I guess, you know, we've been talking about private property owners taking responsibility for the larger world around them lately. And I think this applicant certainly has, by helping to retire part of that museum property with a conservation easement and by agreeing to a conservation easement on the part of the escarpment that is involved here. There's a little bit of speculative rezoning here, but I, I think the positives way outweigh the negatives. And I can definitely make the findings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Ruggles?
Ah, I think that I, like everyone else, should be very pleased to see the resolution of this case. It's been out there for a little while. I think the property owners here have really done the right thing. I think it will fit with the rest of the area rather well. And I can definitely make the findings for approval of a resolution to forward this to the Board of Supervisors for approval.
Okay, thank you. And this is Chair Ontiveris, and I really, everything that I have to say has been said by my fellow commissioners. And I will just add that the applicant is to be, is to be commended for just really such detailed and great work. And also, just for contributing to the community, as you pointed out earlier in your presentation. So thank you for that. I also can make the findings and will be recommending approval to the board. So with that, I will take a motion and a second for recommend, recommendation of approval to the board.
Hey, I would like to go forward to this. I move for sending to the Board of Supervisors a recommendation for approval of case ZC dash nineteen dash zero zero nine.
A second. Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Ruggles and a second by Commissioner Burton to recommend approval to the board on ZC nineteen dash zero zero nine. All of those in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters? Commissioner Walters? Commissioner Walters, are you with us? If you can hear me, you're muted.
Yeah, Dawn's, Dawn's muted.
Sorry, technical difficulty. Aye.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
And Chair Ontiveris also vote aye. So the motion passes unanimously for recommendation of approval to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is case number ZC twenty dash zero one five.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. This case is the Murnane Zone Change. And in this case, the property owner is the Murnane Family Trust of Flagstaff. The applicant is Matthew Peace, also at Flagstaff. The current zoning on the property is both general and RS eighteen thousand. The size of the parcel is one point nine four acres. And the request is to change the zoning of a two point two-three acre portion of the parcel to RS ten thousand and change the remainder of the parcel to, excuse me, AR one. This is a city, a vicinity map showing the subject property. You can see that it is in the south-central area of Kachina Village. And this is an aerial photo showing the subject property and the zoning around that. I wanted to point out this strange-looking piece right here. This, and I'll talk about this a little bit more later, this is actually a parcel at one point. And that's how it ended up with that RS eighteen thousand zoning all in this kind of strange area. This is the subject for our parcel. It's G, as I said, there's AR zoning to the northwest and to the west, we have RS ten thousand. To the east, we have RS forty thousand. So I'll go ahead and do a quick background on this property. That triangle-shaped piece of area has existed since at least the nineteen seventies. I look back to the seventies, possibly the sixties, and that, that piece was there as a parcel. It was approved for a zone change from G to RS eighteen thousand in nineteen ninety-two. And it, this parcel was eventually split between the subject property and the adjacent property to the southwest in nineteen ninety-five. So if you, this is a zoning map showing the subject property. This is sorry, I'm getting an Amber Alert on my phone over here. This is the subject property. This is that RS eighteen thousand piece there. And at, at some point, that was split between this parcel and this, and the parcel down here, the subject par, property and this property here. And that's how that came to be. At this point, what the applicant is requesting to do is they would like to change, basically, I'll show you the map in a minute, but they, it would cut off right here, about here. This little piece would be a separate parcel, and that would be a parcel. This piece would be zoned consistent with this zoning on this side. RS ten thousand in this piece, which would still be well over an acre, would be zoned AR one consistent with the zone to the northwest right there. And this is that survey the applicant has proposed. You can see the driveway right here. This parcel is like right off of the driveway. I'm not sure if they, and they probably do intend to use this, use this as a shared driveway. Well, they're not showing that at this point. But it would be right next to the driveway, and I can, I can show you the picture of the property next here, I believe. Yes. So this is that driveway. This would be the lot that was cut off. You can see this drainage goes right through here. And over on this other side or to the left is the other parcel that's not developed as well. So this would be the property that was created. This is, this property's been developed with a couple of different, looks like housing units, quite a, quite a This is, this property's been developed with a couple of different, looks like housing units, quite a, quite a bit of development on here. So it'll just be split off and retained as one separate piece. The applicant, as part of the citizen participation plan, they held a neighborhood meeting on October the 5th. There were two people in attendance. There were no significant concerns expressed about this. And staff has not received any comments on this application. And I want to just look quickly at the compliance with the comp plan and the Kachina Village area plan. There's not actually a lot in either one of those plans related to this particular type of zone change, except that both do, of course, support a range of housing alternatives. And of course, this new lot would be very similar to other lots in Kachina Village and on adjacent properties as well. And that means that it meets number three in the zone change findings. It also is, can, does meet the other two findings as well. I have addressed that in my staff report. And with that, staff is able to make the findings and recommends approval of ZC-2015. And I'll take any questions from the commission.
Okay, Mr. Short, I am not seeing any. So I am going to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative is available to address the commission.
Yeah, my name is Brandon Richards. I am the representative for Matthew Peace today.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead and address the commission. Let me have you state your address for the record. And also, I would like to ask if you have received the staff report, read it, and agree with the conditions.
My name is Brandon Richards. My address is 753 Comanche Street in Flagstaff on the Mountaineer side. I have received the documents, and I am not finding any issues with it and agree to everything there. Yeah.
Okay, do you have anything else to add, other than what Mr. Short presented to the commission right now?
No, Bob handled that pretty well. Yeah, it's just, from our side, just a simple zone change to make it conforming with the neighboring parcels there. And the plan on this parcel is to build a spec house. We're shooting for a single story, about 1,900 square feet, so it won't be anything atrocious. And of course, adhere to all the setbacks. So it won't be, as far as the discussions we have, there won't be a shared driveway. And it will be set off of that driveway. Again, we haven't designed the house, but it should be about 12 feet.
Okay, okay, thank you, Mr. Richards. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Richards? Okay, and I am not seeing any. So at this point, I will ask if there is anyone in the public who wishes to address the commission on this case tonight. And I'm not seeing anything there either. So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and close it to the public and open it up for commission discussion. Mr. Clifford, Commissioner Clifford?
I can make the findings to, to approve this.
Okay, Commissioner Walters?
I can make the findings as well.
Okay, Commissioner Burton?
That's my own technical problems. I can make the findings as well. Kachina is a hodgepodge of zoning. And I know my zone, my lot is not zoned the way it should be. So, yeah, I don't, I don't see any problems with this.
Okay, okay, thank you. Commissioner Best?
This seems like housekeeping. I think I can make these findings easily.
Okay, and Commissioner Ruggles?
I also can make the findings, and I'll echo Commissioner Best on that, just good housekeeping. Very, very well done.
Yes, and this is Chair Ontiveris, and agree, this is, I can make the findings, and this is a good cleanup here right now. So with that, I'll accept a motion and a second, please.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we sent to the Board of Supervisors, ZC-20-015, with the findings stated by staff for approval.
Second. Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Clifford and a second by Commissioner Burton to recommend approval to the staff on ZC-20-015. No excuse me, is that the right number?
Yes, that is the right number.
Yes, okay. Thank you, Mr. Short. All of those in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
And Chair Ontiveris also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. Mr. McNeely, I've got a question for you. On the first case we heard for Lockit Ranches, Mr. Schwartz recommended that we strike condition number three. And when we made the motion, it did not go through with that strike in it. What do you advise?
So, Madam Chair, we can, we can certainly look back at the, at the minutes on that motion, but as long as the motion was, was as recommended by staff, then it would include Mr. Schwartz's modification of the staff recommendation.
Okay, so it would.
I did not, I did not add the recommendations by staff in my motion, so.
Uh-uh. No, so it's ki, it's kind of lingering out there. And that's, that's, I'm kind of looking for some direction here.
Well, Madam Chair, we've got our county attorney's office Representative Aaron Lumpkin with us as well. I imagine if there was a desire to change a, to change an action, you have to, we'd have to reopen that item. But Aaron, if you're, if you're available, certainly would appreciate your, your input on that as well.
Aaron Lumpkin here. Um, yeah, just, I think I'd be in agreement with Ms. McNeely that in order to change the action, we would need to reopen the, the item.
Oh, okay, let me, let me put this out, because it is going to go to the Board of Supervisors. And although we did not strike the third, the third recommendation in this, is that seems to me that if that is something that everybody is recommending and that the applicant also wants the fire district, et cetera. It seems to me that although we neglected to do it, that it could be picked up at board level. Would that be the simplest way to go about this? Or do you, or Mr. Lumpkin, do you suggest that we go back and open it and make a new motion?
Just to be clean, if it might be, might be the easiest way, but without doing a little bit of research and looking into some more parliamentary procedure, I wouldn't be able to give a definitive answer on that. But I do feel reopening the, the item would be the cleanest way and the most definitive to handle the situation.
Okay, so in order to do that, do we need to make a motion to reopen ZC-19-009? Then do a motion to approve with the modification of striking the third item?
That would be my recommendation, as well as, I doubt that it would happen at this point, but also again, inviting public comment, since the item has been readdressed for discussion.
Okay, all right. So then, that is actually what we're going to do. So if I could have one, I'm going to need a motion and a second to reopen ZC-19-009. I'll make a call. I will do a motion on striking condition number three.
I make a motion to open case number ZC-19-009.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion, and it's a motion by Commissioner Walters and a second by Commissioner Ruggles to reopen ZC-19-009. I am going to now ask, the reason for reopening this is because we had intended to strike item number three, or condition number three in the staff report. So I will reach out and ask if there is anybody in the public that wishes to offer input to the commission on this at this point. And seeing none, I will go ahead and accept a motion to recommend approval to the board striking item number three.
Okay, I'll clean up my own previous motion then. I would like to make a motion for a recommendation of approval to the Board of Supervisors for case number ZC-19-009, striking condition number three as recommended by staff.
And a second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Ruggles and a second by Commissioner Walters to recommend approval to the board on ZC-19-009, striking item, striking recommendation number three in the staff report. All those in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
And Chair Ontiveris also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors for ZC-19-009, striking I, recommendation number three in the staff report. Thank you. And the third item on the agenda tonight is CUP-20-058.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. This case is the Targa propane storage terminal CUP. And in this case, in the application, the property owner is Woodrow and Candace McNabb of Hobbs, New Mexico. The applicant is Targa Resources of Houston, Texas. The representative is Michael Grace of Dallas, Texas. The zoning is IH 6,000. That's industrial, heavy, heavy industrial zone, 6,000 square foot minimum parcel size. And the size of the property is 12 foot 2' 7 acres. And the request is a conditional use permit renewal of CUP 08017 for a bulk propane storage and wholesale marketing terminal that's identified as a utility facility in our zoning ordinance with modifications to expand the railcar uploading, unloading rack system to allow for additional cars to be unloaded. And this is a vicinity map showing the subject property. You can see this is Winona, right in this area. And over here is, this is the subject property right by the Winona exit. And this is in a area with, with a heavy industrial type zoning or industrial type zoning, some of the same uses as this. To the north is a mineral resource zone, which is, I think, the only one in the entire county. So it's quite an industrial area here. And this is an aerial photo showing the subject property. You can see the railroad goes through here. This is a rail spur that goes off of the railroad, back into the industrial area. And this is the spur that goes into the Targa site. You can see where there's a couple of cars right here being uploaded at this time. And over here, we see there are three 90,000 gallon propane tanks. And that's where the uploading goes to, of course. And I wanted to show you a zoning map, just to kind of show you how much industrial area there is around this subject property. So a little background on this property, it was actually an ammonium nitrate processing plant and explosive storage facility from 1968 until 1998. So quite a, you know, quite a impactful use going on there for about 30 years. After that, there were other industrial uses approved for the site, but none of them really lasted very long until in 2008, when the applicant came along and requested a CUP for this bulk propane storage facility with those 90,000 gallon tanks. That was CUP 18017. This CUP did expire in 2018, so it has been expired for a couple of years. So the applicant's coming back now and requesting a renewal of the CUP with the modifications to add those two additional uploading rack systems. And this is the site plan showing the property. And again, here is this, this is a spur that goes back into the industrial area. This is kind of a road that's on the property. A private road. This is Winona Townsmen Road right here. And as you can see, there, there are three of these currently, these uploading sites, and they would like to add two more. Now, they are currently adding two more. Over here, you can see the 90 gallon, 90,000 gallon storage tanks. And this is just a little diagram of what those look like. It has a lot of plumbing in here, so you can, you can connect a piping that goes back to the 90,000 gallon storage tanks. And this is a stainless steel walkway that they use to walk along this area. And this is a photograph of the site. Again, you're looking back. Here's the spur that goes back to industrial area. Here's the spur that goes into the site. And you can see that the cars back here and, and the uploading facilities, along with the 390 gal, 90,000 gallon tanks, tanks back here. And in this case, by the way, I did want to point out that I, I kind of had an emergency right before this staff report went out and I had to turn it over to Jess McNeely, to, to Mr. McNeely. And there was a little bit of miscommunication. The staff report that was in your packet does not include this information. It, it talks about a citizen participation plan and neighborhood meeting, but that didn't really happen in this case. Staff went ahead and removed the requirement to have that, that meeting, that neighborhood meeting. Because as I've shown, this is in a heavy industrial area. It's an existing development, and we didn't really see any reason to have another meeting, because it doesn't really impact this area very much. These are the findings of fact for conditional use permit. I've addressed those in the staff report. And with that, staff has confirmed the applicant is in compliance with the conditions of approval and that the requested modifications remain consistent with the findings of fact. Staff recommends approval without the requirement for additional renewals of this conditional use permit. So that's something that staff has been doing, as you know. And in this case, we don't really see a reason to renew this, this application again. And with that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Short. I am not seeing any of the commissioners unmuting. So I'm thinking that there are no questions from the commissioners for you. Is the applicant or the applicant's representative available to speak to the commission?
Yes, ma'am. Michael Grace is here to represent Targa.
Okay, Mr. Grace, could you again state your name and address for the record? And I would like to ask if you have received the staff report and if you agree with the, it looks like 10 conditions in that report.
Yes, ma'am. So, my name is Michael Grace. Our address is 811 Louisiana Street, Suite 2100, Houston, Texas, 77002. I have received the report and we're fine with the conditions.
Okay, do you have anything to add beyond what Mr. Mr. Short's presentation?
No, I think Mr. Short covered it from a high level. As he mentioned, you know, the expansion was, was basically just extending the platform, the, the existing platform out to allow for more cars to be spotted and for us to increase our throughput from the facility. So, but outside of that, no, no drastic changes.
Okay, okay, thank you. Mr. Grace, do any of the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Grace? And I am not seeing any, Mr. Grace. So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and ask if there is anyone in the public who wishes to address the commission on this case this evening. And I am not seeing any there either. So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and close it to the public and open it at for commission discussion. Commissioner Clifford?
I can make the findings to approve.
Okay, Commissioner Walters?
I also can make the findings.
Okay, Commissioner Burton?
I can make the findings.
Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Best?
I can make the findings.
Commissioner Ruggles?
I can make the findings for approval also.
Okay, and Chair Ontiveris, I can also make the findings to approve this application. So I will accept a motion in a second, please.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we send CUP two zero zero five eight to the Board of Supervisors for approval with the conditions presented by staff.
Okay, Commissioner Clifford, this is a CUP, so we're just, yeah, we're just going to approve it.
Okay.
And that's to you, Matt, right?
Yep. I make a motion, yeah, I make a motion that we approve CUP two zero dash zero five eight with the, uh, what was it, thirteen?
Ten.
Yeah, thirteen. Thank, yeah, next one's thirteen. I'm sorry, my screen's ahead of me. With the ten.
It's okay. Okay, can I mute this? Dude, oh, Commissioner Ruggles, did you second that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I've got a motion by Commissioner Clifford and a second by Commissioner Ruggles for approval of CUP twenty dash zero five eight with the eleven, ten conditions as stated in the staff report. All in favor, say aye. Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Chair Ontiveris also vote aye. So the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is CUP twenty dash zero five nine.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is Zach Schwartz with the Planning Staff, and this case is CUP twenty zero five nine. The property owner is Bradbury Companies LLC out of Stevenson, Texas. The applicant is Jeremy Budge out of Sandy, Utah. Existing zoning is the general zone, that's a ten acre minimum, single family and agricultural zone. The subject property is a hundred and sixty acres, and this request, the proposed use is a campground and associated agritourism. I have in the screen a vicinity map, so you'll see up near the top, this is where the majority of the parks community is. Here's Highway I forty, and we have Williams to the west. If you take Garland Prairie way down and around, we have the subject property right here. You can see it's an in holding within the Kaibab National Forest. That's, that's all the green is the Kaibab National Forest. I have a map here that was provided by the applicant where you can see we're coming down here along Garland Prairie, and this Garland Prairie is a county maintained road. And we take Rosalinda Springs Forest Service Road as the primary access to the property. There's also a secondary access coming off north. Here's an aerial photo of the property, so you can see there's a great expanse of meadow along the northern portion of the property with stands of mature ponderosa pine trees kind of on the west and south of the property. And there are these large tanks that historically served as livestock watering for the area. And, and here at the bottom, you see Rosalind Springs, how it comes up from the Kaibab National Forest. Here's a photo that I took of the property. So this is at the northern portion of the tank. It's called Moose Tank. And this is looking north toward the meadow. You can see there's some, obviously, over the years, there's become some riparian and sort of vegetation and that sort of thing on the property. Here's a picture, a little bit further south, where there's an existing old cabin on the property. And for the proposed development, the applicant is requesting a sixty-five unit campground. The first phase would be just ten units. These would be glamping tents, sort of as you see here at this picture that was part of the applicant's narrative on the top left here. And related to the campground, there would be a large indoor dining and kitchen area, walking trails, fire pits, pools, spa, and a yoga deck. Some pictures of what perhaps would happen on the property as far as those amenities are shown right here in the middle of the top of this slide here. And the general theme, I guess, of the agritourism is this restorative agriculture where, and I think the applicant maybe could elaborate this on this a little bit more than I could, and it was in the narrative that was within the packet, but basically taking this overgrazed livestock property and sort of revegetating it in a sustainable way. But also associated with the agritourism, there would be an orchard, arboretum, barns and livestock grazing, horseback riding, greenhouses, and other sorts of agricultural activity. So here is the site plan, and you can see all these areas with the green. This is some of the restorative agriculture and sort of grazing area here. I believe orchard over here, some of the facilities related to the indoor kitchen and sort of gathering areas for the campground here. And you can also see dispersed throughout the development are these glamping tents. Up near the north would be some employee housing related to the proposed uses. And keeping, of course, the, the tanks, historic tanks are something that's part of the sort of restorative agriculture type of idea behind this project. As far as landscaping, there is a waiver requested, so rather than the applicant planting a bunch of new vegetation that's sort of written out in the landscaping ordinance for frontage and surrounding buildings, that sort of thing. The property includes a number of mature trees and riparian vegetation that's around the existing tank that the applicant would keep. And in addition to that, the applicant's agritourism includes considerable new vegetation that would meet the intents of the landscaping ordinance. So staff supports this waiver request with a provision for a plan to deal with noxious and invasive weeds, which there weren't very many of them on staff's visit to the subject property. Regarding road access and maintenance, typically it's a requirement of the zoning ordinance that a campground, a commercial campground in the general zone be located on a county maintained road. Garland Prairie, as previously mentioned, this is all county maintained, but there's a slight portion here that's Forest Service land, Forest Service roads that are not county maintained. So in lieu of direct access on Garland Prairie and having a county maintained access, staff recommends approval of the waiver with the condition, it's condition number three, that the applicant receive approval for maintenance ongoing of Rosalinda Springs and the US Forest Service roads to the property. I do want to make a correction from the staff report. In the condition number three, staff mentions a special use permit. Whereas I think there's another sort of permit that perhaps the applicant can elaborate on that does the same sort of thing, basically requiring a plan and continued maintenance for the county roads, or sorry, for these Forest Service roads to be used for the project. So I'll show on the last slide, my staff is recommending striking the word special use permit and replacing that with all required approvals basically for the maintenance of those roads there. So staff does recommend approval of the waiver with that condition number three that staff is asking the Commission to modify. As far as citizen participation and public outreach, the applicant notified property owners within three and a half miles of the subject property on November twenty fifth to respond with any comments on the proposed development plan. And nothing was received up until an email was received today by staff where a property owner and there was no sort of reference for where this property owner lives exactly or where they own property. But just generally that they were in the parks area. They were concerned with the general density of the projects, traffic and road maintenance related to the project. And staff does find that those concerns are mitigated by the thirteen proposed conditions of the staff report. I wasn't able to get in contact with the person who was concerned. But I, I'm also not sure that they saw the recommendations, but it seems that these concerns are mitigated by those conditions that are recommended. Wildlife, of course, when we're interfacing with the forest and expanses of property that are environmentally susceptible, staff did recommend, and the applicant was amenable, and more than amenable, they were happy to and felt that wildlife is, is part of the draw to their project. But staff did create two conditions relating to wildlife. And the first is condition number eight, basically discussing, and I won't go through all the language, either retrofitting all of the surrounding fencing of the subject property. So all of it exists, I believe it's barbed wire to make it so that it's passable by wildlife. Staff has recommended that the applicants basically just retrofit that according to the urban wildlife planner specifications so that it is passable by the wildlife. And rather than, the condition allows two different methods, I guess. So retrofitting all of it or having a plan set forth with the urban wildlife planner within ninety days of approval of alternate methods that would be amenable to staff and the applicant to retrofit some of the fencing. And the fencing plan or retrofitting that fencing should be carried out within two years. That's the way that the condition reads. As far as the tanks on the property, they've existed for a long time and it's become sort of riparian habitat, and that is something that's pretty rare in Arizona and something that the comprehensive plan supports retention of and protection of. So the staff has also made a condition that any modifications of those existing tanks be approved by the urban wildlife planner, and the applicant has mentioned that they are amenable to that condition as well. Regarding Firewise Plan, that's something that's required for campgrounds in the general zone. This is a work in progress, so staff has conditioned, it's condition number two, that the applicants become part of the Ponderosa Fire District or subscribe to the Ponderosa Fire District. They're located in Belmont and Parks area off of the main road there up to the north there in parks. So the applicant will create a Firewise and Emergency Plan with the Ponderosa Fire District, and that's all part of condition two that the applicant is amenable to. I just want to go through the different portions of the zoning ordinance, the different requirements for commercial campgrounds. So the first is that there's a minimum parcel size of ten acres, so we have a hundred and sixty here. The second is that the maximum density for a campground is two units per acre. And the applicant could have requested three hundred and twenty units, but the applicant's plan shows sixty-five units, so well under that maximum density. As far as the access on the county maintained road, we've discussed that, how the applicant has requested a waiver, and staff is in support of that, and in lieu of being on the county maintained road that the applicant would have approvals for continued maintenance of the roads through the Forest Service. There are two sort of requirements related to if there are adjacent residential properties, which there aren't, so those are not applicable. It's the fifty-foot compatibility setback and neighborhood compatibility plan. So those aren't applicable because the nearest residential property is quite a ways from this one. The applicant is not requesting any RV sites, so there's a maximum density for those, so that's not applicable. And we just discussed the Fire District subscription and Firewise and Emergency Plan that the applicant will finish prior to conducting the use on the property. So staff is seeing that all of the items are checked off as far as requirements for a commercial campground in the general zone. For the long range plan analysis, there are two plans that sort of overlap in this area, and the first is the comprehensive plan. I put a number of goals and policies in the staff report that I've discussed, but generally, the comprehensive plan supports projects that consider wildlife habitat and wildlife corridors and also Firewise Plan, so staff sees that as being met. Parks area plan was written in nineteen ninety-eight, and it doesn't generally support commercial commercial uses in any areas except for a few areas way up here near I forty, where there's already commercial hubs existing. Staff is interpreting that the policies that are put in the staff report regarding those are considering more heavy impact commercial uses, like a gas station or retail store, something where the environment is severely changed by paving and lighting and all these sorts of things that the plan didn't anticipate that this agritourism and campgrounds would be approvable in the general zone with neighborhood compatibility and resource protection assets. So staff is seeing that the Parks Area Plan goals relate and policies related to commercial development are not applicable for this particular project. And if the Commission has any discussion on that, I'm happy to elaborate. But as far as the findings, the Commission knows that there are four findings of fact that need to be met for approval of a conditional use permit, and staff is able to make all four findings. I've gone through that in the staff report. And if the Commission has any discussion, I'm also happy to go through that. But for the meantime, if the Commission can make the findings, staff recommends approval of CUP twenty zero five nine with the proposed conditions with the following amendments that I'm showing on the screen now, basically for condition number four, striking a special use permit and inserting instead all required approvals, and that's regarding getting the maintenance plan for the Forest Service roads approved by the Kaibab National Forest. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions with the Commission, but staff is recommending approval of the case.
Okay, Mr. Schwartz, I am not seeing in, oh, no, Commissioner Walters, you're unmuted.
Okay, I'm, and looking at this plan, it looks like a great plan, but the, the one thing that I'm a little concerned with is the attractive nuisance of the water inside around the, the human areas. So what I'm suggesting is that they, they may put some water along the borders of the property in at least two locations, maybe the north and the west, to have animals have access to water without coming inside and having interface with the humans. Is that possible?
So Madam Chair and Commissioner Walters, I can definitely see that point. I haven't written up a condition that deals with that sort of issue, but I'd like to, if I can, bring up an aerial map of the general area. I'm going to try to do that. If you'll just hold with me for a second here. I want to show you something. Okay, let me try to share it now. Okay, so I think it's, it's a point well taken, and certainly the Commission is able to create any sort of condition along those lines. I will just say, though, that in addition to the applicant is amenable to having retrofitting at least portions of the fencing along the outside of the property to wildlife friendly fencing, which would allow passing through and for animals to drink out of Moose Ranch tank, which, so this again is a subject property. There are a number of different water sources in the area. We have Schultz Lake here, which is a large body of water that wildlife can currently go to, whiting tank and a few different other sorts of tanks and, and bodies of water in the general area that would still be very accessible and not closed off whatsoever for the wildlife. But again, it's something where the applicant is amenable to retrofitting some of the outside fencing to be permeable for wildlife. And, and so that's, that's what I have to say about that. We do have, I think, Jessica, the urban wildlife planner with us today, if there are additional questions or comments that might be pointed at her. So that's what I have on that issue.
Respectfully, if you go and look at the plan that they presented and you, you look around where the, the housing and all is, is planned on, on, on being, I, I stand by my earlier comments, that we need to ask the applicant to provide a water source right at the, at the boundary on probably the north and the west side.
Understood, thank you. I'll put up the, uh, the plan here so that this can be discussed further. The plan here so that this can be discussed further.
Would could the, or on, let's see, why don't we have. Our wildlife planner speak to Commissioner Walters' comments?
Yeah, um, this is Jessica Simmons. Um, Commissioner Walters, are you concerned about wildlife attacking people or what?
Commissioner Walters, you're muted. There you go.
Apologize. You know, there, there, there is a danger with 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 the elk and deer and rut. In the summertime and I spent a lot of time on a ranch just less than ten miles from here. In the the wildlife would would do anything to get to the water. And my concern is is with the housing like this, that the elk are going to be coming through, migrating through to get to the water. Where if they just provided a water source that was close by without the people. Now, looking at this, I can see that that, you know, it it in the best scenario, it might. That one line might extend over to the west of the property, but. You know, we've been in a drought for a long time, so I doubt that that's going to be like that. So I'm just suggesting that we add some water at the perimeters for them to come and drink.
Well, the water that's there, the tanks, you can see that it already is at the perimeter there, so I don't know that adding additional water sources. Would really necessarily draw them away from that large water source. I mean, it might dilute. The number of animals visiting the main one a bit, but there are cabins all the way. All all over the the property, so I don't know that any other water source would be any further from cabins.
I'm talking about just a drinker. You know, it could be a water-fed drinker that's, I mean, a a pipeline-fed. Type of a of a plastic tank, anything to give them. A source of water without them having to come in if they're thirsty enough. If they're coming in for. To play in the water or to eat, they're going to come in anyway. Just a thought.
But there, so you were talking about, I believe, the northern and western boundaries. There are cabins along those boundaries, except for that north. Eastern corner. Is where were you thinking of having the the drinker? Because I don't see how it would be any further from cabins than those ponds are. I mean, it could, yeah, I don't know.
I'm talking about it that at the northwest corner up there. Up in there to have a drinker up there. And then, and then maybe one just, it's, they're going to be attracted to the smell of the water anyway, but down at the bottom down here. Which is kind of cut off on my screen. But but maybe down in the bottom somewhere, there's another access for them, but. I don't know, you're, you're the expert.
Yeah, no, I see what you mean. And if if it were in those corners, it looks like that southwestern corner. I I see a bunch of topo lines might be pretty steep, but maybe there could be a drinker there and, um. Yeah, I do see that, you know, there, there's some trees separating. Those two corners from the cabins as opposed to those big, the moose tanks that are there that are right in the middle of everything. So I I could see that being beneficial. Yeah, I could, it could, um, because I'm sure animals are going to be attracted. To that area because of the water, which is so rare in that in that region. But, um, yeah, if they were just, if they could just get to those corners and get some. Water instead of coming right into the development, they might prefer to do that.
That's my only thought. Thank you.
Um, you know, I'm just piggybacking on this on. If you put one here and you put one here, if that's where I'm understanding, Commissioner Walters, you're talking about putting them on. You, you're still going to have all of the, you're going to have them coming in from down here as well. The the elk, the deer, the wildlife, and they're going to be going right to that. I. I can see that if you put the drinkers there, that there's, there may be some, but. Do you does Jessica, this may be more for you, would. Would wildlife readapt to that if there was a natural tank there? Would they readapt?
I'm I'm not sure what you mean by readapt.
Well, they're, they're naturally going to go to the tank. On, I I would think, wouldn't they? I mean, I'm not, I'm not an elk or deer psychologist here. But I I normally see them going to the water source, the natural water source. So if there were the different tanks put out, would they go there instead of going there into the to Moose Tank?
Um, I think they would. I mean, all all they're going for is water and that isn't a natural feature. That that's a man-made feature in case that.
Oh, Moose Tank is, okay.
I believe so, um. Uh, so, yeah, I I think if they just want a drink of water, a drinker would be just as good. I don't think they're gonna, I I, in fact, I think if they're. Placed at those two corners, there there are cabins sort of nearby, but there's certainly, they wouldn't be putting themselves in the middle of this development. The way they would if they chose to use the tank. So I would think that once they discovered those drinkers, they they might be. More, they might be preferred by wildlife because they'd be on the edge of development as opposed to in the middle of it.
Okay, and what size of on? This would either go to you, Ms. Simmons, or Commissioner Walters, what size of drinkers are we talking about as far as gallon capacity?
Well, I have drinkers that I put out there, just my my old horse troughs and I I put out a thousand gallons. And and when it's hot and dry, like it has been, they drink a thousand gallons every three days.
Okay.
This could be hooked up to a float system, so you could just have a small, you know, two hundred and fifty gallon. Tank there, but just anything for them to come and get a drink when they're coming off the mountain after laying down all day.
Okay, okay.
It's just a thought and and I I'm a founding life member, Arizona Elk Society, and we do a lot of drinkers. And it would be extremely effective.
Okay, and so you're, just for clarification, you're talking about the northwest and the southwest corners.
Well, I, I think once you start looking at the terrain and and you can see, you know, some of the topo lines on here. If it's up into a, close to a treeed area, that's a little bit more remote. And and I think that our our wildlife planner could help to locate the best spots for those, that's, that's kind of.
Okay, okay, well, when we open it up, why don't you kind of start thinking of some verbiage for a potential on. Condition on that to read to the commission and we'll bring that up at commission discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for on Ms. Simmons at this point? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Simmons. So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and reach out and ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative is here with us tonight.
Yeah, this is Jeremy Budge.
Okay, okay, Mr. Budge, would you please state your address for the record and. Let me ask if you have read the staff report and if you agree with the conditions on that are in there. And any thoughts on Commissioner Walters on proposed condition about. Putting two drinkers on there for the wildlife.
Okay, and my address is eighteen thirty-five Sunshine Trail, that's St. George, Utah, eight four seven nine zero. And I have read through the conditions. There are. A couple that I would like to talk about, but in general, I think the staff has done a great job that of, you know, describing the project and. And it's been really great to work with everybody. I'll, I guess I'll start with. The drinkers, I think that could be a great idea, actually. I want to do it in a way that makes the most sense, and so I'd love to work with. Ms. Simmons on that and and talk about what might be. The most useful there. And maybe. Maybe just in the wording of the condition, just have some leeway for her to be able to. To recommend something that would, you know, after she, we've had some time to look at options, you know, so we don't get pigeonholed into a a specific. Solution at this point, but I do like, I like the idea of that and, you know, like, like Zach mentioned. That's part of kind of the ethos of this project is really trying to respect the wildlife and be a good part of the ecosystem there. And so, yeah, I'm willing to to look into that. The only other conditions, I believe, is condition number ten. Specifies a twenty-foot wide road. I think that's, that's a, that's totally fine for the main two-way roads, but. I would like some leeway in there for skinnier roads, just to be a little bit less impactful to the site for. You know, secondary or one-way roads on the site, on the site plane, you kind of see that some of them. Only access, you know, less than ten tents or so like, and if it's one way. I think the fire code also allows for a twelve-foot wide one-way road. So I was wondering if we could make that adjustment. And then the only other, mostly a question at this point. Is I noticed that condition number twelve is a five-year approval. And I'd like to understand, I guess, what the, what the renewal process looks like and just make sure that. The project has the longevity that it needs, you know, there's going to be significant investment going into this project and I really want to be able to. You know, do do things right and not, and some of that would require that, you know, make sure we have enough longevity for the project. And so if that's just an administrative renewal, that doesn't, you know, it's not a. Another political process at that point, that's one item, but I just want to make sure I understood how that was working.
Okay, and I will tell, I I can actually speak to that, that Coconino County has. An allowance for what's called an administrative renewal. And so if you are in compliant with all of the conditions for your CUP. And there have been no complaints, you can administratively renew this. It's just almost across the counter and almost across the counter process.
Okay.
Um, now that said, that answers that question for you, but I have a question that on. What would be, what do you feel would be inappropriate? If you're feeling five is not appropriate, what do you feel would be. Appropriate for your comfort level?
Um, I mean, with the level of investment, you know, this is a long-term project, you know, really, we'd like to be there. Indefinitely, of course. Uh, you know, I also will be bringing on in investment funds and they're going to want to make sure that. Uh, that there's enough runway there to recoup investment. So really, I mean, I don't know what. If indefinite permit is a possibility, I know that.
Uh, okay, well, if anything is possible, okay, to answer that.
Okay.
What I, what I'm going to do, Mr. Budge, is I'm, okay, do you have any other concerns except for condition number ten? Where you would like to see the twelve-foot wide roads and then the. Time the term on condition number twelve. Do you have anything else other than those two concerns?
Uh, no, I think, other than the one that Zach already had, or. Mr. Short's already, already addressed in the road use permit.
Right, on condition number four, okay. Okay, then what I'm going to do is, um. I would like to ask Mr. Short if you could please address the. Condition number ten, the comments from the applicant, condition number ten and the and condition number twelve on the term. Are twelve-foot wide roads, is that acceptable per, you know, fire code? And I would like to know your thoughts on the five years.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Zach Schwartz with the Community Development Department. So as far as number ten and the width of interior driveways, basically. I don't believe, and and I wish we had some of our engineering staff with us, I don't believe twenty is a. I think it could possibly go down to twelve and I think that would be the absolute minimum. Maybe to broaden it, or or maybe Jess has some other ideas on that, but maybe we could just do it, make it. With a width approved by the engineering division. And then we could look at what is the minimal based on whatever circumstances they have in their design criteria. Again, welcoming if Jess has any comments on that. As far as number twelve and the time period. I guess that was sort of a standard five-year timeline that we've been giving to most of these commercial campgrounds in the general zone. Just to make sure that all the conditions are followed up on, we don't really have a process. Other than the renewal for which we check back on all the conditions and make sure they're met. There's a substantial amount of conditions that that do need to be met and there will be some requirements of different permits, say. For from the building division or from environmental quality and engineering where. Staff before things are developed, staff can make sure that some of these conditions are met. Some of them are ongoing. It is definitely within the purview and allowance of the Planning and Zoning Commission to do. An approval period for no time length to expire or for any different time period that's. That's wanted by the commission and I will kind of elaborate. I think you, Madam Chair, were really good about describing. The administrative process for renewals is really pretty simple. It's just done by staff. It's practically over the counter. And we just check off that all the conditions are met and then the zoning ordinance does allow. Now for administrative use permits, as long as conditions are met. An expansion of the time period that's approved as well. So if we go back for the administrative renewal in twenty twenty-five. See that all the conditions are met and everything is in good faith and meeting all the intents, then presumably staff could approve it for. A ten-year after that or a fifteen-year, a twenty-year or even indefinite. So those are just my thoughts there and I didn't know if Jess wanted, the Assistant Director, Mr. McNeely wanted to add anything.
Thanks, Zach. This is Jess and thank you, Chair Antiveras. On the condition number ten, the driveway width, yeah, twenty feet. Is regulatory for a, for an access easement to other properties. Or in a subdivision, but this is an internal drive, like a driveway. So there is not, as as Zach was stating, there's not a regulation that governs. That governs the width of an internal driveway, so. Between our engineering staff and the the fire emergency services provider. If if they are okay with internal driveways of the applicant's proposed width, then. There's no regulation that that we would deal with otherwise or that would regulate it otherwise. On the permit expirations for condition number twelve, as the commission knows. Commercial campground CUPs in the G-zone is a new thing. We're obviously seeing a lot of them and all of the other. Commercial campground CUPs up until this point, correct me if I'm wrong, Zach, but they have all been given a five-year duration. Part of the logic of the commercial campground CUP in the G-zone is that the zoning stays G. The zoning is still general and these campgrounds could be a. A light footprint, a low-impact campground for some number of years, primarily in this case tents. Not permanent, not a lot of permanent structures and that if they went away. If a campground, if if a commercial campground offered operated for some number of years. And then and then ceased to operate, that the conditional use permit could eventually go away and essentially. The land just continue under the G-zone for residential and typical ag uses. So I certainly understand the the applicant's concern. We can, we can surely, as Zach and you, Chair Antiveras, have have expressed to the applicant. We can certainly let the applicant know that if if a conditional use is approved and the expiration date comes up. And the applicant wishes to renew, they can renew through an administrative process and it's literally just administrative. There's no, no hearing process involved if all the conditions are being met and there's no valid complaints. So if if the applicant can point to a specific duration. That there's a reason why they would need a a specific number of years beyond five, I think that's something that could certainly be. Discussed and and could make sense, but otherwise, consistent with the other. CUPs that we've seen come before the commission, we think. we think an expiration for campground CUPs in the G-zone makes sense. However, there's no, there's nothing in the zoning ordinance, there's nothing in ordinance that requires an expiration. So if there's any other questions on that, I'd, I'd be happy to, to answer.
Okay, and I, I actually appreciate Mr. Schwartz reminding the commission that we can, on the term limit here, we can add that if all of the conditions are met, that staff can approve for a longer period next time.
Absolutely.
So thank you for that, Mr. Schwartz. And so on condition number 10, could you guys, Mr. Schwartz or Mr. McNeely, could you craft some verbiage to modify that one for us? While we're kind of in commission, commission discussion and we, and then we can review that?
Madam Chair, this is Zach Schwartz. I'm happy to do that, I do think it might, and I can craft up some language on this, but without having anybody from our engineering division who approves these here with us, I think we can make it as simple as, with the width approved by the engineering division and we can go through, they can go through at the permitting process, what is the minimal width that's acceptable from their standpoint, from the engineering standpoint, but I'll go ahead and craft that up for you.
Okay, okay, thank you, and I think, yeah, that would, that would be helpful. Okay, so do the commissioners have any further questions on, for the applicant at this time, having had his questions clarified by staff? Okay, I am not seeing any, so I am going to ask if there is anyone from the public who wishes to address the commission on this case tonight? And I am not seeing any, so I'm going to go ahead and open it up, close it to the public, open it to, on, commission discussion. And I am interested in, from the other commissioners, I'm interested in the thoughts on conditions number 10 and number 12. So with that, Commissioner Clifford?
I think, 10, like Zach, Mr. Schwartz had said, that's going to be part of engineering that's going to determine that. And I, I, 12-foot wide is wide enough for a fire truck. And if you look at the plan, it's a circle at the end, so they would be able to go in and out. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't have any problems with a 12-foot road. As far, as far as the expiration, I would not go past 10 years. Because it's going to be an administrative renewal. It's going to take them a year or two to just get off the ground and get that first phase going. It's not just a stamp and there it is. So I would go on a, go out 10 years on that and then with the administrative renewal, they can go from there if there's any, any complaints about the property.
Okay, so the initial, if I'm understanding you correctly, on the, you feel that the initial use permit should be for, for 10 years, so then it would be expiring on July 29th? Is that right? Or would it be jerked?
This is Zach Schwartz, I'm sorry. The expiration date should have been from today's date, January 6th. That was something that was kind of a layover, copied and pasted condition from another report. So I apologize for that, it, it should read January 6th.
Okay, and then Commissioner, Commissioner Clifford, you were saying 10 years, so have it expire 2030? And then with that administrative renewal, for a longer period, for, at staff's discretion?
Yes, because that gives, that gives them time to get all the infrastructure in, get everything done and make sure, because it's going to be, be looked at repeatedly by different parts of the county staff to make sure that they are in compliance.
Okay, okay, I got you, okay, thank you, Commissioner Walters.
Just looking at it on the, on number 10, the, the, depends on what the grade is. So when you talk about the width of the road, you can also talk about shoulders. And the, the shoulders are at a 45-degree angle, so, you know, my, my thoughts are that they just need to work with engineering to make an applicable, efficient road to work in there.
Okay.
As far as 12 goes, I think 10 years is very generous. You know, it's administrative renewal on here, as long as they're complying with all the conditions, it's, it's a real simple thing for them and, and that's just a check and balance that we put in a long time ago. So I, I'm good with five, but if, if the rest of the commissioners want to go to 10, I'd go that far, but not any longer.
Okay, and Commissioner Clifford, I'm going to jump back to you real quickly. Your thoughts on putting the two drinkers on as approved by Ms. Simmons?
I think that's a great idea. The more, the more drinkers we have out there for wildlife, the better off we are. And the drinkers being away from the cabins actually give the people a better viewing point because the, the animals are at a distance and they're not as scared of them. So I think it'd be a draw for the animals and the, the people who are using the property to, to actually see the animals better.
Oh, okay, thank you, Commissioner Clifford. And I'm just going to ask staff at this point, while you are crafting language for the other conditioners, or, excuse me, other conditions, would you please craft a proposed condition for the, the drinkers, wildlife drinkers as, as approved by our wildlife planner? Commissioner Burton, your thoughts?
I agree with what everyone else has said so far. Am I doing the math wrong in my head? It's 2021.
You're right.
Didn't that be a six there?
Yeah, so, yeah. On five years or 10 years?
Um, I, I kind of want to split the difference and say seven, because I do, I think five may be a little short, just because of how long it takes to develop this stuff and funding and all that fun stuff. But again, I mean, it's such a simple administrative process that I definitely wouldn't want to go more than 10 years. But yeah, that would be my maximum, but I do think five is, just for investment purposes and to be able to give that sense of security to investors, I think five might be a little short, so.
Okay, but you, you're comfortable with 2031, just like Commissioner Walters, that's your outset, though?
Yes, that's my, that's my outside window of approval, the maximum.
Okay, got it, okay, Commissioner Best?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I went out and visited the site. And it's really quite an interesting site, definitely overused and overgrazed. We spent considerable time out there walking and talking with the applicant. And I, I, I think that his aspirations are in the right place. I think that, that what he's trying to do is, is very much consistent with the values and comprehensive plan. And so I hope that it works out. Now, we, we've done a lot of these, I was just writing down, there, we've done five of these in six months. It's amazing. And I've got some proposed ideas to put into the conditions. One would be to change number five, to add to number five, the applicant shall maintain a noxious weed mitigation plan. I don't, I didn't see that language anywhere else. And to add on to number 11, the applicant shall provide a leave-no-trace education program and a forest ecology education program. Excuse me, as I've stated earlier, just tonight, what, what we find is that mitigating the impact, off-site impact on these projects is difficult. The Forest Service is not, is not an effective partner because it is so overworked. There, there just aren't enough employees to get deeply involved in each of these projects. So we really have to ask the applicant to be the driving force and making sure that off-site impacts are minimized. And I think the applicant would probably embrace that, just having talked with him and understanding his values. And I'd like to get that in the form of a, of a condition as stated. I'd kind of go with seven years, but I can do 10. I would add a condition 14, no rental of motorized vehicles will occur on the property because of the overuse that we've seen. And number 15, I would say applicant will provide water sources for wildlife at the northeast and northwest corners of the property as approved by staff. So with, with those conditions, I'm very enthusiastic about this. You know, this, this property could have gone a lot of different directions, it could have been a ranch house and the head of grazing outfit, but talking to the applicant, he seems knowledgeable and hungry for information about how to restore this property to, to a real showcase. And I'm enthusiastic about this project.
Okay, all right, and I'm thinking, I'm listening to you and I'm watching the modifications in real time here. So what we're going to do is I'm going to move on, Commissioner Best, I didn't, I didn't want to cut you off, were you complete with your thoughts?
Yeah, I'm happy to, to, to make the motion if you want, I'll go, I've got a list of conditions here or someone else can do it, but I do have a list going.
Okay, and then we've also got, we're going to compare that with the modifications that staff has done there just to make sure that we capture everything.
Madam Chair, was there something on condition number four?
Yes, there was. Uh huh, right there.
Or, or change, as approved by staff or changes by staff or?
No, if they actually, if you can look at your screen, look at the red letter.
Okay, okay, good.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Ruggles?
Okay, I concur with just about everything that I have heard from other commissioners so far. I would like to add a comment about the length of the permit. This is an issue that came up when we dealt with the use permit for timberline firearms. And the problem was financing and the additional, well, length of time, I think should be 10 years because very simply, it, it may not necessarily, everything may not necessarily go according to plan. It may take a while to get the financing that is necessary for some of what the applicant wants to do and that I think will provide a little bit of, of a cushion in terms of time and doing that. So I would be fully in favor of increasing that to 10 years. The only other item I have, and I hope Mr. Schwartz is ready to write here, it is not a great one. It is condition number six, dealing with lighting. I'd like to give the applicant an additional option relative to that that is based on some fairly recent technological developments with LED light. The second sentence I would like to state, additionally, all outdoor lighting shall be narrow spectrum, comma, filtered, comma, or phosphor converted LED and fully shielded. And that.
Okay, Commissioner Ruggles, are you reading, looking at the, the red modifications that staff just put in?
Let's try this again. What I'm seeing on the screen is not what I said. The second sentence needs to read, additionally, all outdoor lighting shall be narrow spectrum, comma, filtered, comma, or phosphor converted LED and fully shielded.
Okay.
I think we got it, and the reason is the filtered really is kind of losing out with respect to narrow spectrum and phosphor converted LED in the marketplace. And there have been some extremely good developments for the phosphor converted LEDs that it's not quite as good as the narrow spectrum, but it's a heck of a lot closer than it used to be. And that will make it even more possible for the applicant to comply with this condition if we add that.
Okay, all right, what's there now is what you're saying?
I'm sorry?
If you look at, if you look at the modification that Mr. Schwartz just put in, that's the verbiage you, you're looking for?
Yep, if you just put a comma after narrow spectrum.
Okay, can you stick, there we go.
Thank you, now we're, we're in good shape. And I have nothing more to add other than I think all of the other additions and changes that other commissioners have suggested are excellent and I am 100% behind them.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles, okay, this is Chair Antiveras. And I also am in agreement with Commissioner Walter's additional drinker placements for our wildlife. My, my thoughts on the term, I, I really think that Commissioner Ruggles kind of summed it up best there. On, because this is going to take a while and five years is going to fly by pretty darn quick. So I would like to have it, I would like to see it be 10 years, expiring on 1/6/2031. On, and it seems like we were all pretty much in agreement on that. I know we had 10 being the outset and a couple of sevens there, but I think, I think 10 might be the magic number here. Otherwise, I am, on, you know, Saad, if you, or Commissioner Best, if you want to go ahead and move to a motion like you had suggested, because it sounds like you've got some great notes written, why don't we go ahead and put that out and make sure we've got everything covered?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I will start by moving to approve CUP 20-059. And then if staff will work with me and we could just start at the beginning of the conditions, condition four is as written now. Condition five is as written now. Condition six is as written now. Condition 10 is as written now. Condition 11. Okay, condition 11, we would add applicant shall provide a leave-no-trace education program. And a forest ecology education program. And so 12, we will change it to 10 years, expiring on January 6, 2031.
Okay.
14.
Oh, you know what, Commissioner Best, let me, let me interrupt here on condition number 12. If you could pull it back down, on, had we, we did not talk about in here about if all of the conditions, if this does go administrative. had we, we did not talk about in here about if all of the conditions, if this does go administrative on it having staff approve it for a longer timeframe after the 10 years. Did you want to put anything in there about that? It's your, it's your motion.
Madam Chair, if I could just interrupt real quickly, sorry about this. This is Zach Schwartz. And I believe that the zoning ordinance already allows for administratively for staff to expand the time period. Does the Assistant Director, Mr. McNeely, do you recognize that as well?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So then that's already done. Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Okay, Commissioner Best, we're on number 13 now.
Okay. And I would add a number 14. No rental of motorized vehicles will occur on the property. And a number 15, applicant will provide water sources for wildlife at the northeast and northwest corners of the property as approved by staff.
Okay. And actually, Commissioner Best, if you can look at your screen, look at what staff just wrote for condition number 15. That's regarding the drinkers. And that will allow by not, by not putting an exact placement of them there, that will allow for the wildlife person to be able to place them best.
That looks great. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right. Then I think, I think we've got it. So I've got a motion. Do you need to second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. So I have a motion by Commissioner Best and a second by Commissioner Ruggles for approval of CUP 20-059 with the conditions as state, with the conditions stated in staff report and the modifications on discussed adding conditions 14 and 15. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
And Chair Ontiveris also voted aye. So the motion passes unanimously with the modifications to the staff report. All right. And our final case this evening is CUP 20-062.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. This case is the Eagles Landing sign waiver. And in this case, the property owner is Greenhaven Holdings, LSC of Bieber, Utah. The applicant is Twin Rocks Enterprises LLC of Bullton, Arizona. The representative is Bruce Anderson. The zoning is planned community where CG 10,000 zoning standards apply. The size of the property is 1.89 acres. And the request is a conditional use permit modification of CUP 20-015 to allow an additional freestanding sign at a convenience store with Fuel Islands. This is a vicinity map showing the subject property. This is Greenhaven, which is just north of Page. As you can see, it's right by Lake Powell and right on the Utah Arizona border. And this is an arrow photo showing the subject property that was recently combined. Combined several pieces of property to create this one property for this new development. And this is background on the, on this application. The convenience store, the pilot station there with Field Islands was first approved by the commission on April 29th, 2020. This improved, this approval included a sign waiver that allowed an increase in signage on the Field Island canopy. So it, it already has a sign waiver associated with this application that allowed 60 additional square feet. The commission might remember that that was the size of the signage, I think from six square feet to 30 square feet for two different signs on the island canopy. Anyway, while I was reviewing the landscaping photos for this site, I identified a second freestanding sign not approved by the commission. And I'll show you a picture of that in a, in a minute. In the meantime, the second freestanding sign was actually the non-conforming sign from the store that was previously located on the site. So there had been a sign there before and that was the second freestanding sign. The only indication that staff had that that sign was to be retained was on the site plan, it indicates existing sign at the location of that. There was no other indication in the submittals for CUP 2015 such as renderings or requested waiver as required. So whenever you apply for a conditional use permit, you're required to have a signage plan. You're required to have all the signage, the signs that you are requesting for that property. And of course, if you go beyond what is allowed, then you need to request a waiver for that. That did not happen at that time. In addition, section, this is our non-conforming section of the code. Section 3.13 C2 says that indicates that a non-conforming sign may not be moved or replaced except to bring the sign into complete conformity with the ordinance. In this case, the applicant replaced the entire sign cabinet and also completely refurbished the sign pole. And this is, this just describes the size of this non-conforming sign. It is at a height of 28 feet, 2 and 3/8 inches, and it covers 137.5 square feet. The current standard for a freestanding sign and you only are allowed one freestanding sign for business or for parcel in the commercial zone. The current standard is 15 feet high and 125 square feet. The applicant did request a sign that meets the standard and that was approved by the commission and that has been installed. So I wanted to show you those, the pictures of those, the signage. This was, this is the sign in the front here that what does meet the standard, it was requested by the applicant, it was approved by the commission. This is the sign that was unexpectedly used by the applicant. So this is the legal, it, there was at one point a legal non-conforming sign. Right now it's not really a legal sign because it was, wasn't approved by the commission. And this is a close-up of that sign. And these are some photos that Co-Chair Walters had requested that I take when I'm up there. And you can see this is, he had asked that I take pictures of the signage going from the highway to show what it looks like. This is Highway 89 as it goes north into Utah. So you can see this is the sign that they installed that, that would require a waiver from the commission. And this is the approved freestanding sign. And I'm just going to say that this sign is probably a lot more important than this sign. It's not that easy to see. Staff would have hoped that the applicant had requested to retain the sign originally and not install this sign at all. It really is, this is really a more visible and more important sign. And this is going south on Highway 89 out of Utah. And it shows Asia coming down the highway. You can see that, sorry about that. This is the sign that would require a waiver from the commission. And the other sign, the approved freestanding sign is hiding behind this this, this masonry wall here. So it's barely even visible from, coming from this direction. Now, if you're further up the highway, further north, then you might be able to see it a little better, but it's not a very visible sign. In terms of citizen participation, a neighborhood meeting was held on December 8th. Eight people attended the meeting. The applicant does not report any concerns from the attendees about the sign. There are four comments attached to the report and none express a concern about the sign. So that would have been attached to your staff report. And I wanted to go through, basically, this original CUP was already approved. It already has conditions of approval. It already meets the, the findings for conditional use permit. So what staff believes in this case is that it, this sign would need to meet the findings for a waiver, which is a new addition to the code as of about a little over a year ago. So I want to go over those with you just to show how this lines up with those. The proposed, the first one is the proposed waiver will not be detrimental to health, safety, or general welfare of persons living or working in the vicinity, to adjacent property, to the neighborhood, or to the general public. And as I've said, neighbor, the neighbors were notified of this sign. They have not indicated any objections. I think honestly, the neighbors are happy to have this store here with some additional services for them. An additional freestanding sign really doesn't seem to have an impact on the neighborhood. The second waiver finding is proposed use otherwise conforms with the conditions, requirements, or standards of this ordinance and any other applicable local, state, or federal requirements. It certainly does meet that, meet that finding. And then the last one is that the granting of the waiver is the minimum that will accomplish this purpose and will not constitute granting a, of a special privilege inconsistent with the limitations on other properties in the same zone. Now, this is something you really can't say because other properties, other commercial properties are generally held to the standard of one freestanding sign. So this does allow for a second freestanding sign. However, this is an existing sign. It's been there for a long time. And it could be determined that it's appropriate for this development because it's a relatively large development and store. Staff, it would be the, the way the verbiage in the middle that I've added is as an additional waiver to the requirements section 4.2 point C, point 5, point B, 1.1 shall allow retention of the legal non-conforming freestanding sign as modified by the applicant as a freestanding, as a second freestanding sign. And with addition three of CUP 20-015 is modified as I just presented.
Mr. Short, are you there?
Yes.
Okay. We lost you for a little bit. You ended, you ended with that this modification would bring, bring about the waiver and bring that CUP 20-015 on into conformance.
Is this the correct page? I was
up there anymore.
I'm sorry?
Up there anymore. It's just a black screen with your name on it.
Okay.
Okay, now we can see it. Now we can see it, Mr. Short.
Okay. So I'm not sure where I was, but I was, I was indicating that in order to approve this sign waiver, staff is recommending that the commission modify condition three of CUP 20-015. And that modification would include this underlined text in the middle, which says, "An additional waiver to the requirements of section 4.2, point C, point 5, point B, point 1 shall allow retention of the legal non-conforming freestanding sign as modified by the applicant as a second freestanding sign." And with that, if the commission, you make the findings for a CUP waiver, staff recommends condition three of CUP 20-015 is modified as presented. Any questions from the commission?
Okay, Miss, oh, Commissioner Best?
Yeah, it being late, I'll just be real direct. Did you ask the applicant if he'd take down the new sign and leave the old sign? And that would, that would make sense to me. I mean, looking at the, the, the sign that we're having a problem with, it's got prices on it. It's much more visible. That's the one that catches your eye. I don't see that the new one has much value. Did you, did you talk about?
Commissioner Best, I didn't actually talk about that. I mean, it, and the pictures that were requested by Co-Chair Walters were, you know, very enlightening to me, you know? As I, as I looked at those, it did make a lot of sense. Wasn't immediately apparent that that was the best option, I should say. So we did, staff did actually talk to the applicant about removing the sign that they had, that was put up without approval. So we did talk about that. They did not want to do that. They wanted to, you wanted to, to keep that sign. So that is not actually something I've talked to the applicant about.
And would that bring us kind of close to compliance? I'm always sensitive about signs because of precedent and because it's, I think it's a really, I think our sign up ordinance is tough and ought to be. But it is sometimes tough on business people. Would that clients?
Commissioner Best, it, I mean, it's not, you wouldn't be completely in compliance, but like I said, I think it would have been very helpful if the applicant had requested that to begin with because that makes sense. That is, that's the sign, I mean, from a layman's, from a perspective, not, not knowing completely about business, it looks like that is an important sign to have. The other one is less visible and less important. So, you know, staff would have hoped the applicant would have requested that to begin with. It's a very reasonable request. The sign's already there. It's, it was legal non-conforming. And I think the commission could have approved it, but that's not, that's not what happened.
Okay.
And I also have to bring up, you may have seen this in the narrative. And this is not something the commission can consider. But I would like to say that the original applicant is no longer, that they are not the current applicant or the applicant that is currently with this organization anymore.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I would just like to interject that what Commissioner Best said was if they would take down the new sign, I think the, the new sign is the tall one. And the approved old sign is the short one. And I would agree with you if that's what you're trying to say.
Well, let me, let me clarify that I would suggest taking down the one that is grounded and that isn't, doesn't have the prices on it. And I would leave up the one that has prices on it and is more visible. You'd have one sign. It seems like you'd be closer to sign standards. And given the, this interesting grandfathered issue, I think we could approve this sign without going too far off track and setting a precedent for, for future issues.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. That's, that's what I understood that you were saying. Take, if you can see the picture on the screen.
Yeah, I'm a little unclear about what we call these two signs. One's on a pole, one's
This one is the newest sign, but that one is a refurbish. That's actually a new sign. This, the, if you know what the cabinet is, that's this entire, this entire, all of this was replaced. That's my understanding. This part right here was
But it was, it was there. So basically it's a grandfathered sign. We're just missing some paperwork.
It was the same size.
The new sign isn't done much for anybody. So done much for anybody. So, yeah, what to the applicant?
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Short? Okay, seeing none, is the applicant or the applicant's representative with us tonight? Mr. Short, do you recognize the name or do we have the applicant with us?
Um, Madam Chair, I did not see the name of the organization on, at the meeting, I'd side found their phone number and sent them a text message to ask them whether they were here and I've not, as far as I know, received reply from them. So they may not be present.
Okay, all right, um, then I'm going to see if there is anyone that is joining us this evening from the public that wishes to address this case. And I'm not seeing anyone there, so I will go ahead and close it to the public and open it up for commission discussion. Uh, Mr.
Um, for the record, I visited the site. And if you look at the pictures that, uh, Mr. Short took. When you're coming in from Utah, coming towards Page. I was, I took a picture from the A dot sign that says, uh, pilot uh, gas, gas stop and, and all of that coming in from Utah. And I was back a little bit further from where he took that picture. You cannot see that sign at all that's on the ground. It is completely obstructed by that, that brick wall. And the only sign you can see is the freestanding post sign that's out front. If you're coming north, coming out of Page, once you crest that hill, the sign that is on the ground blends in with the background and you cannot even see it. It just blends in with the color of the building and the canopy, but you can see the freestanding sign on the post. And it comes up on you real quick. You come over and that station is kind of down in a little dip there. And it comes up on you real quick and, um, I can make the findings to keep, to, to, uh, allow them to, uh, uh, keep the freestanding post sign. And the approved freestanding sign, I think that would be up to, uh, to the new owners or the new applicant if they want to take that out or not, because it's not doing much good at all because you cannot see it. So I can make the findings for this waiver.
Okay, okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Walters.
Okay, I, I, I tend to agree with what's said. I, I like the, the pole mountain sign. It's easy to see from both directions. I, I think the other sign that's on the ground that in the photo says approved freestanding sign is worthless. And, and I think that it, it sets a precedent on the sign stuff that I'm not comfortable with.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Burton.
I'm of the same mind. I mean, I hate to have them go to the expense to remove the approved sign, but given precedence, I'm, I would follow along the same lines. Um, but it also is almost, almost not even there. So do we, yeah, I, I'll go along with whatever everyone else wants to do. Um, but I definitely think that the grandfathered sign is much more effective and actually, you know, does what it's supposed to do, so.
Okay, on Commissioner Best, I think we know how you feel, but go ahead.
I, I think we're looking at a continuance. I think, uh, there's a deal to be made here that maintains the integrity of our sign ordinance, which I really care about and, uh, takes care of the business owner. And the, the deal is just take down the new sign and leave the one on the pole and, uh, I think everybody would agree to that, but I think it probably is going to take a continuance to see how we can craft that without the applicant's approval.
Um, I don't really want, I, I don't like continuing cases. This, this, I don't think that this is a, that difficult of a situation. So I'd like to deal with it tonight. Um, I think we can deal with it. Um, we'll, we'll come back to that. Commissioner Ruggles.
Okay, um, I'm going to have to agree with Commissioner Best on a continuance, very simply. Uh, for the reason that, uh, the applicant is not here. And I don't want to arbitrarily, um, saddle the applicant with the cost of removing that sign uh, without some input from the applicant on this. However, as far as the waiver goes, uh, I'm a hundred percent in favor of that. Um, I know that when we, uh, updated the ordinance, uh, myself and others uh, were looking at, um, how to deal with situations like that. And that's why, uh, the ability to waive what used to be in the ordinance dealing with this, um, it is there for us to deal with it. Having that waiver ability, uh, I am a hundred percent in favor of that. However, I do think in all fairness a continuance would be in order here.
Okay, then, then let me ask you this. So you're gonna, you, you're in favor of continuing it tonight so you can hear from the applicant.
Exactly. And I think that's a simple matter of fairness, uh, in dealing with this, although you would think that the applicant, uh, would be here, uh, to make his case, uh, on this, uh, CUP, especially if it's going to cost him a little bit.
Madam Chair, may I interject?
Please, please do.
Um, and I, I totally agree. I, I am not understanding why the applicant is not present. They, this was extremely important, uh, to them. We actually, you know, well, I, I won't go into, you know, what we've done to help them, but, um, it was, uh, from their perspective, it was very important that this, that this is approved so they can get a final approval on the station because they were running into financing issues with it. So I just want to interject that and the commission can take that as, as they would like. Because everything that you're saying is very reasonable. Certainly it's reasonable to ask for a continuance since the applicant's not here.
Okay, Mr. Short, when you were discussing with the applicant, um, I know that you already answered Ms. Commissioner Best's question about, um, did you propose removing the sign? And you said that you did not, you did, you did not see that as, as a plan or you did not see that as an option. Would that be fair to say?
Uh, Madam Chair, actually that was, once I did a, a more thorough analysis and went out to the site and took the pictures that I've shown you, I did, you know, conclude at that point that that probably was the best option. I did not, uh, I did not speak with the applicant about that. Uh, but, but that certainly does, I mean, that would appear to be the best option since obviously the larger sign is much more important than this sign.
Okay, yours, the pole sign is more important than the approved sign, you're saying?
That's, that's totally, uh, for, you know, from my perspective, you know, I, it, it just appears like other commissioners said, like the commissioners have said that it is just more important for pointing out, you know, advertising the business than this sign in the foreground you see here.
Okay.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, well, uh, what I'm wondering is, is that we're waiting to hear on from the, if we continue it, it is, it is for the sole purpose of getting the applicant's, uh, thoughts on this. Is there anything, Commissioner Best, that the applicants can say to you that's going to make you change your mind one way or the other?
Well, Madam Chair, um, you know, it could be that the applicant lives in New York City. And, and can't get here. I, I would be fine. We could, we could resolve this by the end of this month. If, if staff can make a deal with the applicant, remove the new sign, leave the old sign with the prices on it on the pole. Uh, the applicant doesn't have to come. I think we have a pretty good consensus among the commissioners that that's, that's the logical thing to do. That maintains the integrity of the sign ordinance, so we're not, uh, creating any precedence issues. And the applicant, I, I don't care if he comes or not, as long as, uh, he makes, makes nice with, uh, with staff and we rewrite this thing in a way that we seem to have consensus on.
Right. And, and I guess Commissioner Ruggles, but I guess the point that I'm getting at here is I think Commissioner Ruggles, you had said that you want the, the, um, applicant's thoughts on whether or not he wants to remove the sign. Well, what reason would be compelling enough for you to say, oh, okay, that's, I, I get it. So let's go ahead and leave both of them up.
Actually, uh, I would prefer that there just be one sign, so we do not have a precedent that varies from the ordinance that much, but it also needs to be said that as an issue of fairness, we should be able to hear what the applicant has to say, although I will tell you right now that even with that, I would tell the applicant that, um, I would like to see these, the ground level sign removed and allow you only to use the other sign and state the reasons why. Otherwise, uh, I tend to look at something like that as a bit on the arbitrary side without the applicant actually being there or presenting something or not removing it.
Okay. Um, okay, that's, I, I guess you kind of answered my question that no matter what the applicant, if I'm understanding really Commissioner Best and Commissioner Ruggles, no matter what the applicant says to you, there's not going to be a compelling enough reason, um, for you to say, oh, okay, then we'll go ahead and let both signs stay. It's, it's simply a matter of courtesy to tell them that personally from the commission.
I'd like to modify, uh, that a little bit because, uh, I can't say that my mind is made up uh, one hundred percent until the applicant has the ability to, um, say something to us about why he would, uh, be willing to remove the sign or wants to keep it. Nothing is that certain.
Okay, okay, gotcha. That, and actually Commissioner Ruggles, thank you for that, um, because that helps clear it up for me, uh, for a continuance. Um, all right, I do hate continuances, but I think that the rest of the commission feels that that's the direction that this needs to go tonight. So I will go ahead and take a motion.
That's the case.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Walters.
I, it's incumbent on the applicant to, to attend these meetings. It, it's not fair to us and the rest of the commissioners that they don't show up. If, if there's an emergency and they couldn't be involved and they can bring this back to us and we can look at it, but we, we, we volunteer our time to come and listen to this. We've been on this for what, an hour? And, 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 and they, they didn't show up. I don't know what the reason is. I'm not even gonna, to go there, but they didn't show up. And, and it's in, it, it's in our area to decide this and, and we have sign standards and, and, and to have them remove the sign that you can hardly see. You can't see it from one direction. You can't hardly see it from the other direction because it's so low. I, I don't think that, that, that's it. They want to keep the sign on the pole, fine, you know, but they got to take the other one down. That's my stance. I don't agree with a continuance.
Okay, and, and actually, um, that's where I was at. Um, that's where, that's how I was feeling because staff is going to have to go up there, repost it, redo all of this stuff again. And it sounds to me like staff has best to notify that this was going on, to even reach out and text and say, hey, you know what? We, we got this going on. So the meeting is tonight and I, I'm going to have to tell you that I don't like continuances and, um, I, I don't like kicking, I don't like kicking the can down the road. Because what we have in front of us is what we have in front of us. And that's why I was drilling down on. So what is the, what is the applicant ever going to walk in and tell the commission where we're going to go? Okay, well, you can keep both of the signs. That's, that's what I'm saying. I don't know that anything is going to change. Commissioner Ruggles, I understand. I do get your point about, well, you know, maybe, maybe there is a reason. Um, but I am not, I'm not in favor of continuing it tonight. I would, I would like to have a motion one way or the other, and I would like to deal with it tonight.
I'd, I'd also like to agree with that because, um, they would have had the date, they would have known. So if there was an emergency, you know, they can come back to us and maybe we can look at it again if they're able to come up with something, but I'm, I'm in agreements. I, I mean, it's their responsibility to be here. Unless, of course, there was an emergency, but in which case, I mean, they can just appeal.
Madam Chair, what, what are our options here though? Our option is just to yea or nay the waiver. And if we say nay to the waiver, then we're keeping a small sign and getting rid of the one on the pole that actually is effective.
Um, well, I was already going down that road and could we add a, a condition in there that the, the application is approved, but one of the conditions of that is to remove the, the other sign?
Absolutely.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, so let's, let's head to a motion.
Madam Chair, I move, uh, that we approve CUP two zero dash zero six two with the condition. Uh, staff, can you help me out with that condition, please?
Uh, Commissioner Best, can you see my screen?
Yeah.
I think I tried to make an adjustment. Um, I took a shot, I took a shot at what the commission would like and, and you can tell me if that's what you had in mind. Basically, I changed the end of it to say as long as the second freestanding sign is removed.
That's, that looks good to me.
Um, I would, would have proved freestanding sign as removed. Because both of, both of them are considered freestanding, so the, the approved freestanding sign is the one that would be removed. And the non-conforming pole sign would be, would remain.
Right.
Okay, I'll have to say I agree with, uh, Commissioner Clifford, uh, in this respect, so.
Okay, okay. And I, in reading that, I do agree. I think that that, yeah, I think that's good, Commissioner Clifford. I think that way there can be no question about this whatsoever, what we're trying to do. And Commissioner Burton very well pointed out that the applicant has fifteen days to appeal this to the Board of Supervisors. On, if they don't like the decision that we made tonight. So, um, I've got the motion by Commissioner Best. I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, so I've got a motion by Commissioner Best, um, for a approval of CUP twenty dash zero one five with a second from Commissioner Clifford. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
And Chair Antigaris also vote aye. And to see what happens on that one. And the final item on the agenda tonight is call to the public for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission tonight for items not on the agenda? And seeing none, we are going to adjourn this meeting at eight sixteen P M. And we'll see everybody on the twenty seventh.
Sounds very good.
Good night.
Good night, guys. Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year. Chair Gross, I would like to say one thing to you.
Okay.
Before I go, that in the future, there is never any need for you to apologize to me for any disagreement with anything I may have. I've been doing this too long.
You know, you know, you know, you know, John, I knew that. We've had conversations about that. You know, you know, you know, you know, John, I knew that. We've had conversations about that. Thank you. Thank you for reminding me. Yes. Okay, good night, everybody. I'm signed.
Good night.